The county board is in session.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for gathering today for our third, fourth, oh, well, as a work session on budget, the third work session. We are talking today about the budgets of courts and constitutionals. I'm thankful to my colleagues for accompanying us today in this work session and to the Commissioner of Revenue, join us today to start the session with your office. Ms. Klinger, the floor is yours.
All right. There we go. Thank you. All right, I'm going to wait and see for my slides to get up, but first of all, thank you so much for the opportunity, for being here to be able to present today. I also want to thank my team for joining. I also want to thank our partners in the audience as well, and thank you this past year for your partnership. I truly appreciate it. We could not do the work that we do without you, so thank you. Next slide, please. This past year, we went through a strategic planning process. I won't take the time to read everything, but we did come up with a new revised vision, mission, and values, as well as goals which are not actually viewed here. But our mission is to assess business and personal property taxes uniformly, impartially, and efficiently, meeting the needs of our community. Next slide, please. As you see here at the top, we assess. After me, the Treasurer, Carla de la Pava, will also present on collections. Our roles and responsibilities as the Commissioner of Revenue is to assess. We assess all personal property taxes minus real estate. We are the point of entry for all businesses through our business license process. We also operate a DMV Select, which I'll get into a little bit later. We also provide taxpayer assistance with state income taxes. I do want to draw your attention to the box, the teal box on the right-hand side. As I mentioned previously, we could not do our work without our partners, and that includes all the departments within the county, our fellow constitutionals, the state, the voters, business improvement districts, the Chamber of Commerce, civic associations, the list goes on. Next slide, please. I'd like to first start at a high level of view, just to kind of set the stage. This is our county budget. You'll notice that the gray portion is real estate, so the Commissioner of Revenue assesses 24% of the county local taxes. Those are all of the shades of blue and teals, and our expenses are only 0.4% of the county budget. So that is a significant return on investment. I wish my stock portfolio did that. Oh, come on, it's a laugh track right there. Next slide, please. Briefly, I do want to share with you our FY 2025 achievements. We did accomplish 365 achievements in 365 days. If you're curious, there is a QR code there, and also, I know it's hard to read this, so I have a handout for you real quick. I meant to give this to you earlier, my apologies. And for those of you watching online, this is a copy of this slide, so you too can see it if you check out the link or the QR code. Briefly, I'm just going to touch on a few things. Number 10, we rebuilt our leadership team, and you can see them here, sitting here, looking wonderful. We promoted three team members from within. We brought in one team member from another department, and we brought in two team members from the private sector. I also want to touch on number seven. You heard about this on Tuesday. This is the RECAP program, which stands for Revenue Enforcement Compliance and Payment. I want to thank the county manager. I want to thank DMF. I want to thank HR, thank you, Ben, for working with us. This program allows us to enhance our audit capabilities and our compliance capabilities. In FY 2026, we're looking at the overall program within COR to bring an additional $1.5 million to the table, and I know that's a stretch considering our current times, but we do think it is possible. Number four, we have initiated data-driven and innovation pilots, and I do want to thank DTS. DTS has really helped us to be able to professionalize and also modernize our office. And then number one, we have established a community outreach and communications campaign, and I want to thank the Treasurer for helping us with this as well. Last Wednesday, we presented, Carla and I, to the League of Women Voters, and they loved our presentation. I think we're going to take it on the road, but it's really good for us to interact with the community. Next slide, please. So here are some of our budget highlights, and I won't go ahead and read them for you, but I do want to say that a lot of our daily work at the Commissioner of Revenue's office is operations. However, in the past year, we have really been focusing on process improvement, leveraging technology innovation, and enhancing compliance. We want to make sure everyone pays their fair share. I also want to call out the final bullet on the slide. We have launched a DMV Select survey and a visibility campaign, and if you turn over the handout I gave you, there is a QR code, so you too can take the DMV survey. We've gotten a lot of responses thus far. We've reached out to all the civic associations plus, so stay tuned. Oh, one more thing. To Tudor &amp; Home, we also received a perfect audit from DMV. Our auditor has said they have never, they've been, they're 25 years, and they have never seen this before, so I want to say kudos to Michelle and her team. That's amazing. Next slide, please. Last year, when I sat in front of you, I promised you that we would bring some new measures to the table, and we still have more work to do. So you'll notice, first of all, I want to first call out our emails received. You'll notice that number is going down, and actually, that is a good thing, because we are creating smart forms which allow communications to happen one time, so you can put all of your information, all of your documents in one place, which prevents back-and-forth emails. I know when I first started, I think I found an email that went back and forth 36 times, and that's something we don't want to do, and so our smart forms are really helping us reduce the amount of email traffic. The new measures have asterisks, and so I do want to point those out. Those are things we're going to be tracking throughout the next year and beyond. And again, we're focusing again on compliance. Compliance is so important. Let's see, da-da-da. One more thing on the side. We are also collaborating with the CAPE team, which is the Communications and Public Engagement Team, to create a Welcome to Arlington campaign, a website, as well as materials, so that when we have new folks, new residents, come to Arlington, they know exactly what they need to do, and that includes registering their vehicle. Next slide, please. Once again, a lot of our work is operations, and we are really trying to enhance our compliance. We are initiating this upcoming year expedited audits, so that we don't have to wait two, three, four, or five years to audit a business, so we can do an abbreviated audit to make sure we get out in front of them, to make sure they are in compliance. And this applies to our big players in Arlington, I'm not going to say their names, as well as our small players in Arlington as well. We've also done a considerable amount of work with CPHD and with others on accessory home stays. We continue to gain information from Airbnb, so that we can make sure folks who are running an Airbnb do have a business license. Next slide, please. As for our business measures, again, we want to do more work here to make them more qualitative versus quantitative, but as our audit division grows and becomes more experienced, these numbers will change as well. And next slide. So summary of proposed changes. Let me go ahead and start with the additional monies that are going to be coming in. As some of you are aware, and not all, as constitutional officers, we do receive funding from the Virginia Compensation Board. It's not enough for us to do our jobs, but it is very helpful, and that number is increasing because we are increasing our technical skills and our technical resources, which allows us to ask for additional funding from the state. As you heard on Tuesday, because we are moving forward with our audit and our compliance programming, we are looking to reclassify one position and to add one position to continue to build our compliance capacity. And again, I want to thank the county manager, I want to thank DMF, and I want to thank HR for helping us through this process. We really greatly appreciate it. Next slide, please. We continue to focus on equity. We can still do more on language. During our past crunch time with business licenses, we had a significant percentage of folks coming to the counter who needed language services, and our team is well-equipped to handle that, which is very impressive, and I thank them. We also officially, through the county and from DMV, received our ADA certification. So we were waiting to do that for some time, and we officially made it happen. So thank you to the county for that. Next slide, please. Upcoming programs and initiatives. As I mentioned, we are doing our Community Engagement and Education Campaign. The picture you see there is actually one of our quarterly dishes with the commish. We go out and we engage the public. We get hard questions. We were very privileged. This picture is from when we had it at Amazon in January, and County Board Member Susan Cunningham came with us, so we were able to do a partner presentation, which was really well, it was great. Thank you. Thank you. We are also working on internal training, certifications, and professional development. If we get our folks certified through the UVA Walden Cooper School, we could potentially earn, what is it, 9.3% more from the Virginia Compensation Board, so there is a great return on investment there as well. I mentioned our RECAP program, happy to go into more details there. And then innovation. I know the Treasurer will speak to some of these points, but we are upgrading our ACE and our CAP system on April 1st. It's not an April Fool's. This will bring more functionality and more automation to our offices. There's also a discovery tool, which the Treasurer will discuss, which will help us automate some of our audits, and it'll be a better user experience, so more to come there. Next slide, please. Trends and considerations. I brought this up last year. Our assessing, our pricing guide, we use JD Power. The costs do continue to rise. It is more of a monopoly, so we are working with our fellow Commissioners of Revenue throughout the Commonwealth to see if there's any economies or scale, or if there's other players coming into the market. I mentioned professional development. We are really trying to develop our strength within our office, so that our team members, maybe they come in as a business inspector, they can then become an auditor, and so they can really help bring and generate the revenue we are looking to be able to serve, the needs of the community. And then market forces. I mean, these are the big unknowns on the table. Tariffs have the potential to increase car prices, maybe 12% to 15%, unless manufacturing is brought back to the US, and the question is the turnaround time on that. And then federal government and contractor uncertainty has the potential to impact business activity. We just had our business license due date. We are on track to meet numbers, or maybe surpass numbers from last year. The question is moving forward. We're going to be working with AED to see how many federal contract businesses do we have in Arlington? Are there any types of projections that we can make? But again, we're working with our partners to help support all of our businesses, so that they can be successful in these times. And also, I don't have a number four here, but I do want to just point out future initiatives and potential changes. There has been discussions about tourism improvement districts, there's been discussions about entertainment districts, and there's been discussions about potentially outsourcing print shop. So those are all things that could impact our budget, which we do not have presented here. So that is all I have right now. I'm looking forward to your questions.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Colleagues, I allotted about 10 minutes to this conversation, to this discussion. Thank you so much for the very insightful presentation. So who would go first? Vice Chair De Feranti?
I can fit in.
We have to fix that.
Uh-uh.
You know, sometimes you got to mute somebody. I can fit way in under two minutes of those 10. Page 363, but not tips, anonymous tips. That is great that we have those. It seems, it shows as a newish measure. I can't say that I remember the start of it, although it's possible with a lot of work sessions. The question, I guess, is there's a slight increase, do you track, or there's projected to be an increase, do you track how many of these you follow up on, and do you track sort of the return on them, even if you're trying to be anonymous, or not trying to be, even if you are being anonymous with them?
So to answer all of those questions, hopefully. Anonymous tips, they are done through a smart form. You can go on the county's website to make an anonymous tip. You can also give us an anonymous tip via email or phone. Email is not as anonymous, though. What happens then is we have an automatic license plate reader. We are working right now with civic associations and apartment buildings, where we take out our reader to read plates. As we go out, we also check on these particular anonymous tips and do the research. If we do the research and we find that they may not be registered, a request for information letter goes out. And, you know, sometimes they may have been visiting, or other times they may not have known they needed to register their vehicle. A lot of times, people will come back from that RFI letter, and they'll say, hey, I'm good, I was visiting, or I need to register. If we don't hear back, we do send out a second letter, and then if we don't hear back from that, we do send out a summons. So there is a process, and we can get you more data if you would like.
That'd be great. Just, I'm fine with the first letter and second letter, but of course, how many of those eventually might result in enforcement, and not so much just enforcement, but working them through, so it's not happening at a widespread level, keeping in mind, we got 240,000 people, my building, you know, there were cars that, clearly, they lived there, and I did not make it my number-one priority to submit tips, but I do think we need a system that tries to work, and so if you could follow up with just a little bit on how that process works, that'd be great.
Absolutely. I also do want to give you some additional information. One of our civic associations, one of our larger civic associations, in our three-month pilot with them, we had 108 hits. After all the research was done, we had, I believe, we had to send out 43 letters. We're still following up. Right now, only two registrations have resulted, but a lot of times, you're only going to get, we're going to figure out more what percentage, what the ROI is.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey.
Yeah. On, I know that we're adding FTE for auditing and compliance, which is great, because ideally, that pays for itself, but it looks like we've had a frozen FTE since, based on the budget narrative, I think 2022, but I'm not 100% sure.
Yep.
Do we think that needs to stay in as a frozen position, as opposed to being taken out? Do you think there's a chance in the future you're going to bring it back? Is there a reason that we didn't use that as the conversion for a new auditor role?
I didn't even think of that one. That's a great question.
Right.
So that position was for the customer advocate position, that's my understanding. That position has really been split amongst many people, however, it is an important function.
Right.
But to your point, that's something we really should look into. That was, we didn't think of that before. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. That was really my only question, though.
Maybe I go for a second. Speaking of the advocate, so the number of field visits, because this was what the advocate was doing, right? So in fiscal year '23, you had a very high number that went a little bit down in fiscal year '24, but this year is actually half of what fiscal year '23 has been. What changed?
So I'm assuming, and feel free to speak up, folks, if you'd like, a lot more of our work now is being done electronic. We're able to do a lot more of our work over Teams, also over Zoom, so we don't necessarily have to go out to the site. We do do field visits if we have tried numerous times and we cannot get a hold of folks, and then we make those field visits, or if people just need help and we just want to do the next step, go the extra mile.
Sure. Thank you. I was just, I mean, I really appreciate your attachment and dedication to quality control and making things easier. I mean, we have seen that here. I'm quite intrigued by some of the metrics. I just try to figure out what's the best way to support and accelerate, so we have some ideas from you.
Okay.
Mr. Spain.
Hello, Madam Commissioner.
Hello there.
Great to see you again.
You too.
I wasn't, I didn't have this question teed up, but until my colleague Matt De Feranti brought it up, I do want to circle back, and then I have a second question. On page 363, where we talked about, you talked about the license plate reader program and working in a particular neighborhood first. Can you tell me which neighborhood that is?
So we like to geographically disperse our neighborhoods currently for our three-month pilot, and then we will be expanding the pilot. Penrose, Chambersch Forest, Douglas Park, Lion Village, Leeway Overly, and Radnor Fort Meyer. And we did reach out to all the civic association presidents before we came. They were actually very encouraging, and we have presented at Douglas Park our findings thus far, and we will be presenting in partnership with the Treasurer at Radnor Fort Meyer later this month.
And on that same line of questioning, the information that you're gathering out of these license plate readers, is that internal to our government, or does it tap into any law enforcement agencies outside of Arlington?
Great question. Per our code and per our FAQs on the website, it is only the Commissioner of Revenue. We hold the data for 24 hours.
All right. And my final question, Mr. Chair, and I want to take our attention to page 356, where we talk about this one tax auditor level-four position. It is stated that this position and your quality assurance manager position, they will be entirely offset by the generation of additional tax revenues. All right? So then my question is, you know, do we have any historical data to support this, you know, increase?
We absolutely do. Do you want to go into details on the?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We collected data, or analyzed data, from the last three years of all of our audit cases per auditor, and on average, each auditor has a 2.23% return, I mean, not percent, multiplier, return on their salary, so.
Great. Yeah, you've made note of that in the presentation, I think, for those that may be listening in, and if you see a significant increase like that with, you know, tied to $160,000, people may want to know, what work am I getting in return for that, right? So there are some metrics, you have made some determination on why you justify this, and so, thank you. Other than that, I just want to thank you also for your leadership. I think in my 16 years of being here, what I've seen you do in the past year and a half here, year at least, has been simply amazing, your innovative thought, how you've been out in the community is something that is much needed, and I greatly appreciate it. So thank you, Madam Commissioner.
Thank you so much. That means a lot to me. And thank you to my team and everyone else for helping me to do it. So thank you, JD.
Ms. Cunningham.
I just want to clarify on the 2.3X. I think the position you're recommending is an auditor four. Do you have it broken out for auditor fours, once they are fully functional and recognizing there's some, you know, onboarding?
I do. Actually, I have the specific numbers here, but I can tell you roughly off the top of my head, our tax auditor four brought in over five times.
Okay. That's what I thought. And then I have two sets of questions. One is about your team, and actually, I should build on the congratulations. I'm really, really thrilled to see the team, and I've got to spend some fun time with you guys, and that is a great investment for our county. Can you tell me a little bit about, you know, how your development path goes? So, you know, for instance, we're adding a high-return FTE in the proposed budget. How does one grow into that from within, and how can we support you in that?
No, really appreciate that question. So that particular position is in our business division, and our business division, most folks come in as, unless they're coming from a different experience in the private sector, they come in as a business inspector, one, a two, a three, and then they can move up to an auditor one, et cetera. One of the, thank you for asking this question, one of the challenges that we're facing right now is that in order for a business inspector to move over to auditor, because of the classifications, they actually are taking a demotion. And so we are working very closely with HR on these types of things to reclassify the correct positions, because to your point, we really want to build, we want to build that growth path for our team members.
Okay. Great. Mr. Manager, that might be a note for you to help us figure out how we're having smooth opportunities within. I wanted to really highlight, you kind of mentioned it several times in your thank-yous, but really in the work, the interdisciplinary work you have done, and we heard from the interdisciplinary team around enforcement and compliance earlier this week or last week. But in particular, I think a few things you mentioned, one is the welcome packet, so I wanted to hear a little bit about that. It sounded like that's a residential focus so far, is it both residential and business? And do we have AED and the bids and others as part of the party?
So we are initially working with the CAPE team under the county manager's office, so Erica and her team. The initial intent is residence. However, to your point, we are looking to also do a business function as well. We have seen some mockups. We've been working through iterations, so we are hoping by our next, am I going to jinx myself here? We're hoping by our next Dish with the Commish in May, that that welcome packet will be ready to go, so that we can start working with real estate agents, we can start working with the bids, the partnerships, civic associations, to really get the word out and get the materials out.
And that's the residential one?
Yes.
And then a business one is a sparkle in someone's eye?
It is on our strategic plan to get done this year, so stay tuned.
Okay. And I guess I would just lift up, given the time that we're in with federal workforce and contractors turning over, there might be, even if it's a skinny version, that's not quite as pretty, it might be helpful to have that sooner.
Good point.
Likewise, in the coordination, we have various offices doing grants or purchasing services and equipment, or inviting new businesses to start, you know, in terms of AED and procurement and others. How does the tax compliance check work between your office to make sure everyone's fully compliant? I think in our procurement team, that's probably very official.
Yes. I mean, so we are pretty much, there's limited information that we can share based upon county code, but we can be, we can receive a list of businesses, and we can say red light or green light. And if it is a red light, meaning that they are not compliant, we will then reach out to them to help them get into compliance as soon as possible.
And are we doing that in all the areas that we need to, or are there places that we could encourage, or are there systems that are needed, or investments that are needed?
I think we do need to formalize some of the processes a little bit more with some of our departments. We are working with AED potentially on a memorandum of understanding, so that we make sure we are formally checking those boxes.
Great. And then last thing is on accessory home stays. I know that's been another area of interdisciplinary work. Are there policy or system issues that we need to be aware of, either for our legislative agenda or for the budget?
The answer is yes. Let's see where to begin. We are working closely with CPHD right now, because theoretically, anyone who has an accessory home stay, an Airbnb, VRBO, they are supposed to have a permit first, then they will get a business license. Right now, that process is a little broken. We have some system and process cleanup to do, so we can streamline that process. The next challenge, too, is there has been legislation put forth at the General Assembly, which may mean the Commissioners of Revenue office can share less data with CPHD. So we will not know more until probably April, what that actually means, but like you said, we want to be interdisciplinary as much as we can within the bounds of the law.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Any other questions? I believe that we are concluding this. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here, and I'm sure that you'll be receiving more questions. Our Treasurer comes next, from the aspiration to collect to the actual management of the collected. From from the aspiration to collect to the actual management of the collected.
While we get the presentation up and running, I want to announce that Kim Rucker, who has been in the office since I started in the office, not even before I was Treasurer, will have her last day on April 18th. So that will be a huge loss. She's been with the county for 33 years. Kathy Fritz, who is next to her, is now the Acting Chief Deputy. That transition has left me with two chief deputies for a very short period of time. And let me tell you, it's been marvelous. Okay. Good afternoon. Thank you, members of the board, Chair Karen Tonas, Mr. Schwartz. As you well know, the mission of the Treasurer is, as mandated by the Constitution and the Code of Virginia, is to bill, receive, collect, safeguard, and disperse county funds. The highlights this year, we are oh so happy to have the Prism Plus upgrade behind us. We were part of the core project team, and we are thrilled with the efficiencies and the potential for future enhancements. We have also, my team has also been working with the Schools Oracle upgrade. That was supposed to roll out on January 1. It is, didn't, and it has up to about seven, I think about seven months could be delayed. Enterprise Payment System. We continue to add more payment account types, and Kim Rucker will tell you all about that in a few, in a few minutes. The Tax System ACE upgrade, which Kim alluded to, we are happily going to roll out, I believe it's Monday, March 31st, not April Fool's Day, but. The, and then the solar energy tax credit with which the county asked us to put on the real estate bill. The functionality has been built. It has been tested. We are now waiting for, we are waiting for the tax system upgrade and real estate billing to begin. And now I'm going to turn you over to the able hands of Ms. Kim Rucker.
Thank you, Carla. So I guess as I give my final EPS update, I want to start by taking a little bit of time to explain kind of the difference between CAP and the Enterprise Payment System, also known as EPS, and talk about the differences and kind of where they intersect. So, you know, probably since we've been in CAP for 15 years, regularly departments and even constituents are coming to us and saying, can I pay this fee that I owe to the county in CAP? And why not? Unfortunately, the answer usually is no, because CAP is the customer-facing portal for our Tax System ACE. So it can only manage accounts and accept payments for accounts that are in ACE. And currently, that is all of our tax accounts, our utilities, and parking tickets. So, again, given that limitation, we usually have to say no. But coming up with an alternative solution has been a key priority for Carla since she took office. So we went out and found the Enterprise Payment System. And we've implemented a payment system that is very scalable. It can take the smallest revenue streams and really be the handle the entire process from bill presentment to payment. And it can also interface with our large billing systems as kind of the backend payment processor. So we were in our third year of implementation, and we've been working with DTS and our other partners and county departments to implement. On this slide, you'll see the various payment types that are currently in EPS. And you'll see that many departments are using the system. Underlined are the account types that we implemented over the past year. And one of those that I think is most important is our integration with Prism Plus. You may have heard that during the Prism upgrade, DMF took the opportunity to roll out a new module, an accounts receivable module, that can help some of these smaller business streams with their invoicing. And we took the opportunity to build that interface with the AR system at the time. So as they come onboard and that's, you know, it's not, it's not going to work for every billing stream, that AR module and that really DMF worked through that with them. But if it's the right fit, then as soon as they're set up in that system, they can take online payments. And all of these payment types had a, were kind of a project, you know, to get implemented. So I think that will set us up well into the future. But this year, we also rolled out some of those bigger billing systems. So we went live with Permit Arlington last Friday, and we already have over 450 payments. So I'll call that a success. And last April, we rolled out our CAP system with EPS. So that's kind of the intersection. So like Permit Arlington, CAP has always had another system that was the payment platform kind of behind the scenes. So we went live in April, and the advantage to our customers was that we now offer advanced payment methods, like Venmo, Apple Pay, PayPal. And you can see on the next slide that we already have about 20% of our customers are choosing those payment methods. And we continued, we expect that to just continue to grow. So the, and the previous slide also showed, we already have several other payment types in the pipeline for the next year, one being our first DHS payment type that we're pretty excited about, which will be, they're implementing a new childcare licensing system that will need to accept payment. So we're building that while they're implementing. And I think we're going to bring on some other DES payment types. And we'll probably add a few before someone else gives you this presentation next year. But we will continue to add those. I think it's going to be the implementation that never ends. We're going to continue to add payment types as the county needs. So back to you.
For any Treasurer's Office, a functional, reliable, and flexible cashiering system is essential. And our current cashiering system is inflexible. They roll out, they only roll out technical fixes once a quarter. And if there's a bug in that fix, it's not like Microsoft or or Apple, they don't fix it overnight with a little patch. You have to, believe it or not, you have to wait until the next quarter to get a fix. We requested a very simple upgrade to accommodate Prism Plus a year ago. We still don't have it. Our current cashiering system is also not reliable. Five months ago, during our heaviest tax season, there was a bug in the upgrade that the vendor rolled out, which caused hundreds of payments to post with a date in 2021. Okay? So I know that sounds bad, but it's actually worse than it sounds. Because the issue, the issue is that it erased years of penalties and interest on delinquent accounts. So we fixed it, but to this day, the issue has not been appropriately fixed and corrected. And our staff is required to manually identify and correct when this happens in the system. And the worst part, as this chart shows, is that our cashiering system is really expensive to operate. So our, our alternative is to pay a one-time programming cost out of the Treasurer's budget to implement a cashiering module that is fully integrated and already exists within our own Tax System ACE. It just hasn't been turned on. And the best part is that, once you turn it on, there are no ongoing operational costs at all, even with onsite support. It accepts advanced payment methods, which Kim just told you is the future of payments. It simplifies and accelerates cashiering system upgrades. It fully automates and integrates general ledger postings. And, I really like this one, it posts customer payments to our tax time, tax system in real time with the correct date. For FY '26, what we are requesting is two additional collectors. On average, each fully trained compliance staff member brings in $1.7 million annually. So this first-year estimate is very conservative and takes into account the substantial training that is needed in the first year. We wanted to show that at a minimum, these resources will pay for themselves even in the first year. Their contribution is expected to grow dramatically over time. We're also requesting one-time funding to implement another currently unused module of our, our tax system, ACE Discovery Manager, which uses the, the data already in our system to guide collection efforts and to automate some account decisioning. In total, we are expecting to add an additional $2 million in collections. But I want, I want to look at the details. My compliance staff in 2024 collected $43.3 million, $41 million in taxes, and $2.3 million in agency debt, which includes things like parking tickets, ambulance fees, and photo red light. We left $7.9 million owed to Arlington County uncollected. To understand why two additional collectors is critical, I'm going to compare this with 2014, when we collected only $30 million. So over the course of my tenure as Treasurer, with no additional resources, my team now collects 45% more debt owed to Arlington County than in 2014. We are stretched to our capacity. And the result is that we are leaving more and more agency debt uncollected than in the history of this office. As I've mentioned, there's also another way to simultaneously increase the productivity of each of my compliance staff with ACE Discovery Manager. In conjunction with the Commissioner, we are asking with, for one-time funding, which on my side, will permanently increase the productivity of each member of my compliance staff. To summarize our proposed budget changes, our expenses increased by $500,000, which is both one-time funding for the software implementation and two additional FTEs. State funding for my office is expected to increase by $139,000. And of course, this slide does not show the additional $2 million in additional revenue that the, to the county that would result from expanded software capabilities and increased collection efforts. For the year ahead, our county and schools initiatives include, as, as Kim mentioned, EPS is expanded, expanding, build it, and they will come. We're working, we hope that the APS Oracle upgrade will be completed. And we're working with the police on a parking enforcement RFP. But the Treasurer's Office priorities in FY '26 include paperless billing. Paperless billing has been on my priority list for many years, and we haven't had the resources to initiate it. Now that Trump is expected to take control of the United States Postal Service, there is a new urgency to this task, and it is one of my biggest priorities. Applications for dog licenses have been way too manual for way too long. This year, following the Commissioner's Smart forms, we created an online fillable form that allows dog owners to upload the, the picture of their rabies certificate. And we've had, it, it's been wildly successful. We had 70 new dog applications within the first month that came via this form. Our goal is to fully automate this and make it a self-service functionality in CAP. And finally, I would like to expand on our efforts for taxpayer outreach with installment plans. Let's start with delinquent, delinquent payment plans. And I would like to think of this as equity through empowerment. Enforcement action that my office takes, you know, can be very, very harsh. In the past, a payment plan was offered or requested, but only after personal contact was made. With 30,000 accounts that go delinquent, that could sometimes take months. In our pilot program, which we just initiated a month ago, we offered, we threw the email a payment plan to 785 delinquent taxpayers. And so far, 8% have responded by filling out the form, sometimes within minutes, definitely within hours. So we have, through this pilot program, additional payment plans in place for $42,000 in delinquent taxes, which my staff now does not have to contact. It's my priority in FY '26 to offer a self-service, fully automated payment plan to all delinquent taxpayers with their first delinquent notice. Those who sign up and successfully complete their payment plans will not have to endure harsh enforcement action at all. But wait, there's more. Wouldn't it be better if we could keep people from going delinquent in the first place? You know, with the, the challenges we've had with vehicle tax delinquencies in, since 2022, high vehicle values for new and used cars, I think Kim mentioned this as well, undoubtedly with Trump's tariffs, this is going to get worse. We've had stagnant state relief. It had, the personal property tax relief hasn't been changed since 2006. And the average cost of a new car has doubled in that time. One problem we have seen is that people who buy a car mid-year and get a partial year tax bill are completely unprepared for the 12-month bill that is coming their way. In the past, our solution has been TAP, which is a short-term loan. And it still is a great, a great alternative for people that face unexpected problems. But we now have many chronic TAP users. And what that means is they are paying 10% more than, for their taxes than the rest of us. So our solution is, if you're ready for it, our personal, personal property partial payment pilot program. No, it's six. Six P's. The six P's, oddly referred to in my office.
Two times P P P.
This program will allow taxpayers to pay throughout the year according to their budgetary needs. Thus far, in our pilot program, we have offered it to 500 accounts that were, that have an expected tax bill of between $1,200 and $1,700. We have had a 4% return within four weeks. Also, customers are hearing about this in, through the grapevine, and they're calling us and asking us to be part of this program. My goal is to have a fully automated self-service program for vehicle taxes and my new business tangible tax, which can also be a real, not unexpected, but a, a big priced tax that comes once a year. My, it's going to be offered to everyone, hopefully, by the time we get it all up and fully functional. I'd like to be able to offer it right after the due dates for the following year's taxes. If we had only a 4% sign-up rate for, among customers with tax bills that are $400 or higher, we would be talking about 2,100 taxpayers and $1.7 million that would never even go You asked us for budget, key budget considerations. Obviously, the, what's happening in the federal space is, is going to eventually reach my office. Federal layoffs, we can have people that can't afford their taxes. They could also move from the area, leaving delinquent taxes behind. The other problem, which I've alluded to, is the United States Postal Service. I've already talked about the paperless billing, but we need to increase the number of CAP users. And we also need to encourage them to pay through CAP. users, and we also need to encourage them to pay through cap, because it's not just the mail we send out that can be delayed or lost, it's the mail that we receive as well. And even people that pay through the bank, sometimes the bank sends us a check through the mail. It is, it's a little bit crazy. So those are the things we worry about, and those are the things that we're going to try to address as soon as possible. Anyway.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Colleagues, I know that we could spend about an hour. We do installments. Any questions?
Thank you to Mr. Rucker and for all your years of service. And then also, you, just to confirm really quickly, you said the additions that you're asking for are in the proposed budget, according to the presentation, and so I just want to make sure. Because you said, "We are asking for this," and it's in the proposed budget.
Yes, it is. DMF blessed.
Just wanted to make.
It's coffee.
Yeah, just wanted, I actually was going to similarly confirm that was not an additional request beyond the proposed budget.
No, it was not an additional request.
I just want to say thank you for all the work you're doing to bring everything online and make it easier for people to use. I think one of the biggest barriers is just when you try and do the right thing, and it's too hard to get done. And so I'm very intrigued by the people paying their taxes via Venmo and PayPal. Not expected for me, but if that's a place people want to do it, then absolutely, we should make sure that they can do it. And I really look forward to continuing to partner with you all on bringing some of our other services into, you know, the same payment portal, or at least close to the same payment portal. I think the fewer accounts we can make our residents sign up for just to give us money, the more money they will give to us when we make it easy.
Right, that is absolutely true. And I think that there's just a language kind of misconstruction when people ask to be part of cap. What they're really asking for is online payments. And it can get confusing, because when an agency gives me debt to collect, the delinquents are in, the delinquent agency debt people are already in our tax system, so they can pay delinquent parking, parking ticket is a bad example. But if anything goes in there, we can collect that, but we can't collect the on-time things through cap, and that's the difference. So.
Different type of pressure and urgency. Also, different tolerance for fees.
Yes.
Mrs. Spain and Ms. Cunningham.
From Langston Boulevard. Okay, I just wanted to check, you mentioned the discovery module, and I got to fantasizing that that may eliminate thousands of spreadsheets that are painful to manage. Is that correct? Like, does it help us get through that?
Well, what it does is it takes the massive data in our system, and I'll give you a simple example. So it takes the data that says, "Oh, this guy has been delinquent for five years in a row." And we have always gotten payments through bank liens, so I'm not going to send it to a collector for a call or anything else. We're going to send that directly to the bank lien desk.
That's the pattern recognition and prioritization.
Yes.
Okay. And then on payments, I think a very high-level request I've heard is for housing grants and eviction payments to landlords. Has that one been on the to-do list?
It has not.
Okay. So maybe a DHS conversation. Okay, great. And I think otherwise, it's really just a huge thank you. You guys have been the champions of interdisciplinary. I think it was still this year that we made you do the recalculation of the stormwater tax at very, very, very late hours, so thank you for that. And I think, Mr. Manager, on both of the asks here for revenue-producing FTE, I would ask that we keep that on the list of if there's any one-time closeout funds, that we might pull those forward, accelerating those hires, because I think that's a valuable thing, and there's a lot of really good people loose right now.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I think you should walk out of here right now. Go to HR.
Mrs. Spain.
Great. I'll just be brief. Thank you for such a magnificent presentation, and thank you for your many years of also serving in this capacity. So we're greatly appreciative of that, your effort. I just want to kind of go, this page 370, and this is perhaps not scoped as much in your presentation, but given all this going on, I'm thinking about cybersecurity, I'm thinking about what you talked about with technology, and just want to get your pulse on, given what's going on nationally, you know, not to like try to scare everyone, but how do you feel comfortable that from a technology space, I mean, you talked about how it took a year to get a patch. Do you feel confident that our systems are secure? And we have some mechanisms, but how are you feeling about our data at?
Honestly, DTS makes sure that our systems are secure, and I think they're doing a fabulous job at that. So despite the email that I got yesterday that Marie de la Pava had died, and I inherited 10.8 million dollars, besides that email, I think we have been very blessed with the DTS staff that we have that keeps our system safe.
And lastly, I just want to talk a little bit about treasury management. We, you know, invest and bank and have different banking-related services as a county. Again, this is perhaps not so much in your budget, but in the scope of your work. There are a number of, I think, financial institutions that we have taxpayer dollars in, and other layers that could be, their values, I would say, perhaps aren't aligned with Arlington. Would you be open to having a conversation later on about where we invest our money, what banks we're using? Many of these institutions have come under scrutiny by DOJ, have been fined for what they've done to underserved communities and the like, so would you be open to having a conversation later on throughout the year about that?
Mr. Spain, I'm always open to conversation. Absolutely. The relationships we have with banks are, unless it's solely an investment area, that's all under contract. And what we try to do is invest first and foremost in local community banks. And so we've even had recently a bank that has moved to Arlington so that we could establish a relationship with them. So I am absolutely open to that.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Spain. Thank you again. This concludes, Ms. Rucker, deepest, deepest gratitude for your service over 33 years. Oh, my God.
You guys are going to make me cry.
Don't move.
Okay, so we are changing to our Commonwealth's Attorney.
I was going to say, he said, "Don't move," and I was like, "Okay." He was talking to Kim. Got it.
And while we are changing, I want to, to Mr. Spain's comment. Arlington County has a finance board, and we are sitting at a finance board. This is an excellent place to have these conversations about where and how we invest our money and how this works in general. So I will make sure that my colleagues know when the finance board is meeting, so that they have the opportunity to come in and ask the questions.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I didn't know myself until very recently that we really had this.
Watching on C-SPAN.
Yeah, it is, everything is on C-SPAN, and nobody watches. Okay.
Hello.
Mind if I sit here?
You can sit wherever you'd like.
You're going to see my chicken scratch notes, so you'll have to promise not to judge. So I'm going to admit that I have regrets today that I wore yellow, because I look very vibrant.
That's good. We're on the dark side today, I'm sorry.
Shall I start?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, members of the board, thank you, Mr. Schwartz, for affording the opportunity to make this presentation. I want to thank some of our HR folks that are here, Ben and Kathy, who've been very helpful in our hiring, and also I want to say special thanks to Burna, because she's never let a call go unanswered or a question unanswered, so thank you very much for that. So we are the Commonwealth's Attorney, and I am very excited to share some of the good that we've done over the last year, particularly a couple of areas that are a direct result of the support that the board gave us about a year ago. And while our office prosecutes crime, we do much more than that. In fact, I have a binder of 250 pages of statutory duties that belong to the Commonwealth's Attorney, which includes partnership with the Electoral Board to ensure fair and safe elections, as well as collecting late fees when people don't submit their statements of economic interest on time. But the thing that we're best known for is prosecuting crime and public safety. Next slide, please. In doing that, you know, we try to prosecute accurately and fairly, we work towards justice, and we fight for reform. We strive to support the public safety of the community through a holistic approach to justice, recognizing that justice means different things to different people, and that justice includes a commitment to lifting up the voices of victims, a commitment to rehabilitation, and a commitment to evidence-based policies that address recidivism and prevention. Next slide, please. I don't think that measuring trial wins is the way to evaluate a prosecutor office, or the best way, but in light of our focus on diversion and the way that we use our resources, you can see in these charts that we are actually making good decisions about what cases we take to trial and what we charge. And I think that's the important part of measuring trial successes, is that we are doing well because we are making good choices. And some of the cases that we handled this year were a case of child abuse that was so severe that resulted in death, a case of a man who was picking up drunk women pretending to be an Uber driver and raping them while filming them, a case of a young man who committed sexual assault of minors after taking them to parks and giving them alcohol and then filming them, a man who picked up a drunk woman pretending to be an Uber and threw her out of the car, causing permanent brain damage, a man who, oh, and this is actually this case, the photograph, a man who slashed his ex-girlfriend's neck, who had previously attacked her, and she was a domestic violence victim. And in that picture, you can see two of our fantastic deputies preparing for trial. They're preparing a demonstrative exhibit to show where people were at the time that the stabbing happened. We have dealt with critical accident cases where there are car accidents, some usually DUI, but sometimes not DUI, where people are killed, and those are actually some of the hardest cases that we handle, because there's, you know, no way that we can bring people's mothers, sisters, children back to life. And, you know, we've also handled some very serious assault on police officer cases over the course of the last year, including one where a defendant punched an officer and caused a brain injury to that officer. Next slide, please. So we've tried since the beginning of 2020, when I took office, to find ways to effectively and accurately communicate to the community what we're doing, which measures are meaningful. And each year, I've come and complained about our case management system and our data, and for the last few years, I've been trying to clean up our data, and, you know, I'm still coming up against a wall of a system that was created not for keeping data, and that was created in 2014. So it's now an 11-year-old system, and so very outdated. What we are trying to do is do little fixes to that system, so that we can at least try to measure things going forward to some degree. And you can see, we've created dropdown menus, and it took months of wrangling with the company that owns, that provides the software, to be able to explain, you know, if we dismiss the case, what are the reasons why something is dismissed? If there's a conviction, how did that conviction come about? So that we can then communicate to the public, you know, this is a percentage of cases that are being dismissed because they went to diversion, or because there was a lack of evidence, or there were uncooperative witnesses, that sort of thing. So we are trying to reflect what we're doing and to show our work. Of course, this is going forward, this is not, this can't go back in time and enter this information, and we need people to do that at the moment. We are investigating ways to have AI do it and that sort of thing, but this is an ongoing project that we are trying to solve. And it's not the solution, but it is a patch for now. But I am hopeful. We are going to be dealing with this over the next year or two, as we see that our case management system's capabilities are limited still to what they were in 2014, and as we see price increases going up, which I anticipate to be fairly significant. Even this year, they've gone up a third, so I'm anticipating more and increased price increases in our case management system. Next slide, please. So this is one of the things I'm very excited to speak to you about. Last year, you made our conviction integrity director a permanent position. We continue to be the first and the only dedicated unit that employs staff that has experience with actual innocence and with post-conviction cases. And really, it's because of you all making that permanent, so thank you for that. What we've done is, we had our most successful expungement clinic to date in December. We had 40 attendees and 25 expungements. The next clinic is in May, and we have figured out a way to get defense attorneys to volunteer their time, is to teach them how to do this. And so we are creating a continuing legal education training course that will give them the credits that they need, and will give them pro bono hours if they volunteer then. And so our next one is going to be in May, and we're going to be having these regularly in May and December from here on out. We also got the first exoneration of my administration, and it is actually on the National Registry of Exonerations, and we have a couple of other cases that are being investigated and pending right now in that area. We meet regularly with the ACPD and the Falls Church Police Department regarding disclosures that affect people's constitutional rights, and we are in the process of multiple reviews, like wholesale reviews, when a lab analyst was terminated, or most recently, when it was discovered that a lab analyst from the '70s, '80s, '90s had been falsifying her results. Next slide, please. We, this is the other sort of crown or feather in your caps. The reason why we have been able to expand our diversion and restorative justice partnerships is because you all made a position that was a grant position from the Department of Justice, a permanent FTE with the county, and that is our Director of Restorative Justice and Diversion Services. The kinds of cases that we have in restorative justice are multi-juvenile school fight, an attack on the metro, an in-custody jail fight, cases where young people overdose on fentanyl, and it's bringing the families a measure of healing to bring a surrogate in and to have them meeting with other families in a restorative process to help with their healing process. And so when I talk about holistic healing, this isn't about one particular defendant, it's about the healing of the families of the children that died from fentanyl overdoses. Our OAR diversion program, OAR is offender aid and restoration. It's a program that is designed for high-system utilizers who frequently cycle in and out, have very long, you know, 30, 40 contacts with the system, and it's usually because of a combination of mental illness, substance use disorder, poverty, unstable housing, lack of employment. Typically, it's a six-month to one-year program. Participants are assessed by OAR, they're connected to supportive services where they live, and that's really important. They're connected to supportive services where they live, and that's really important because 70% of Arlington's court-involved population is not from Arlington, so Arlington can't provide services. And the services that are provided, that people are connected to, that OAR connects people to, is crisis intervention, emergency and long-term housing, follow-up care with peer recovery specialists, connection with educational and vocational training, job resources, personal fitness, and pro-social activities. And currently, we have 45 participants, and we anticipate that that will grow. We got a million-dollar grant. We wrote and received a million-dollar grant from the Department of Justice to expand this program over the course of the next five years. It is my hope, our ardent hope, that we will see that grant funding because this is a very effective program, and lowers recidivism rates, and helps people live fuller lives, it keeps families together, and it helps people flourish. Next slide, please. So, we have a very short summary of changes. I am very happy that some of the advocacy that other Commonwealth Attorneys and I did increased the funding from the Compensation Board. We had been on a very long-term mission to do that. We didn't get the thing that we really wanted, that a group of us wanted, the reformers, it's actually a bipartisan group that includes reformers, the Virginia Access to Justice Act. It was proposed. It did not make it out of committee, but the Access to Justice Act would have funded our offices by the state for misdemeanors, and that is a significant part of the budget that you all provide to our office, is for misdemeanor cases, because that's about 70% of our cases. So, it would have helped the county a lot to get that. It also, the Access to Justice Act also would have provided additional funding for public defenders and court-appointed counsel, and it would have provided a restitution fund for victims so that they could get the money that they needed to make themselves whole, you know, whether it's medical, or, you know, car repairs, or anything like that. They would have been able to do that upfront, instead of waiting for restitution, of which they may or may not get only a fraction. So, we're going to be trying to get that next year. I hope that we can have the county's support in advocating for that, because it will be a significant savings to the county. Some of the, what is not included, the revenue that's included there includes the grant that I talked about with OAR. Not really sure that that's going to come to fruition now, but it is included in that right now. Next slide, please. So, I made five requests this year, and it seems like I make five requests every year. But I know, and I want to address sort of the state that we're in right now. I mean, it seems like there's a big question of, like, why increase any budget for any agency right now? And given the uncertainty of where things are, and I'm definitely sensitive to that. But we, in the Office of the Commonwealth Attorney, are about public safety, and we're going to have to take on a lot that the federal government traditionally has taken on. Things that are multi-jurisdictional, things that are trafficking, things like sex exploitation, things like racketeering. We're going to be getting the cases for the really bad actors that the federal government used to prosecute, and that they're just not going to be prosecuting at this point, in part because of the purges, and in part because of the change in philosophy and mission. So, it's going to become, it's going to fall on us to prosecute the guy that had a $320 million operation, you know, called Silk Road, and he was trafficking in homicide, he was trafficking in children, and he was trafficking in drugs on that website, and he just got pardoned last month. Election cases are going to fall more to us with election security becoming a problem, as will money laundering cases with the announcement that the DOJ was not going to be pursuing money laundering prosecutions. And local prosecutors' offices are really going to be having to step in to the role of these bigger-picture cases, whereas normally, we've done, you know, sort of street crime and small or white-collar type crimes. So, we're going to have challenges ahead of us. And what I've asked for isn't even what we need. We need so much more. These are a start to what we need so that we can meet the moment. It's the more we can get qualified attorneys that are leaving the DOJ, the better it is for Arlington. The more that we can get autonomous investigators, the better it is for vulnerable communities in Arlington. The more that we can gain trust by being transparent and sharing with the community what we are doing with a community engagement director and a comms director, the more trust we will gain in the community. And the more that we identify and divert rehabilitation, which needs infrastructure, you know, it needs the organizations that we work with, like Restorative Arlington and OAR, to be there and have capacity to take on cases, the more we can do that with the cases that are appropriate, the more we can do the very serious cases that need to go to trial, and that really need to be prosecuted in the traditional ways that we think of prosecution. So, you know, when I go back to thinking about why I talk about trial wins, it's because, you know, what the trial wins show is that, you know, we've been sending the right cases to diversion, and we've been litigating the right cases, and we want to keep being able to do that. We can only do that if the infrastructure exists to send them.
That concludes the presentation, right?
That concludes the presentation, yes. Thank you. Oh, I do have one, excuse me. I just got this, but it is a pamphlet about a Target Abuse Call Program, which, interestingly, it's a program that has shown in Cook County to be an effective way of reducing gun-based homicide and domestic violence cases, and reducing recidivism and repeat assaults in domestic violence cases. And I was very excited that we have almost every piece of this program in place. The two pieces that we are missing are the investigator and a process for referrals to civil attorneys. And we would really like to be doing something like this. We are working with partners to try to engage in them doing something like this, recreating this, really, but I wanted to bring this to the Board's attention, since it's something that has just come to my attention.
Thank you, Madam Commonwealth Attorney. Colleagues, questions?
You want me to lead this effort, right? So, I guess I should go last and see if there's, see, Maureen Coffey has her light on, my colleague, Maureen.
Thanks. So, looking at the budget request, there's a lot here. A couple of questions. Are they listed in your order of priority on this slide?
On the slide? Oh, I don't remember how they were listed on the slide.
I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, helping us understand which things are at the top of your list versus...
So, I'm hesitant to say, you know, they each have a different value. I would say that right now is a good time to be bringing on senior attorneys because of people leaving the DOJ, so seasoned prosecutors. Right now is a good time to bring on investigators from law enforcement agencies where people are leaving, especially federal law enforcement agencies. And now is a time where we absolutely need community engagement to build trust that is being demolished on one side, but also to correct a lot of misinformation that is coming out. And so, I would, vaguely...
Vaguely, vaguely in order.
But in terms of, you know, but everything is, I try not to ask for anything that I couldn't justify as my number-one priority, so it's hard to put them in exact order.
Totally fine. So, three of them are FTEs, which would be ongoing funding, no matter what. Do you view the others as if we had one-time money eligible for that, or do you think those really require ongoing commitments as well?
I think that ongoing, I mean, I think that all of them could be justified as ongoing, but the sort of sustaining the infrastructure could be one-time, and then you sort of one-time again, and that sort of thing. But, you know, what we would do with Restorative Arlington, for example, is then, you know, contract the facilitators directly, so they would be our facilitators. Or with OAR, it would, you know, if, you know, the donors are not stepping up and the federal government is taking away funding, then it could plug some holes. So, those are holes that can be plugged, but they also have other sources of funding, whereas the FTEs are not going to come from anywhere other than the county board.
Gotcha.
All right. Pass along.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. Ms. Vaschu, the front.
I want to sort of pick up where Ms. Coffey left off and be succinct. On the data, you mentioned Slide 5. That Slide 5 felt like, you know, with your system and your chart, felt like ongoing system need. I'm interested in, given the tightness of our budget, I'm interested in what one-time need we may have, and this is more just a place for follow-up. We worked last year to get the, I believe it was $500,000, to be sure, on the ASAP program. I don't know what the spend rate on the ASAP program is, but, and I also understand from our conversations that there may be some additional potential resources on data. But I guess what I would say is, that's a particular area where I'd like to follow up, to ask and see what's possible on one time to address the data piece. And, you know, do I have that right, that Slide 5 would be an ongoing data need and system need, but what you're describing in the bullet feels like, from our conversations, a one-time.
Correct.
And so, if we have some one-time, we have to be very mindful of that one-time in a super-tight budget period, but I guess I'd love to follow up with you, the manager, DMF, a little bit about the spend rate on the ASAP, to see if there is a need, because this has been, we did, of the five, I felt like we did either four or three, I don't remember, last year, and so that would be an area I'd love to follow up. On the community engagement, there's a separate conversation that I have. And then, lastly, the FTE concern is there, and I would just love to see if it's plausible, if there are any vacancies. The need for the structure and the bullet you have here is persuasive to me, and so if there is a vacant attorney at a lower level, prosecutor one, two, or three, I forget the way that they're organized, and it is best in the interests of the office that that position gets, that's a lower cost in ongoing than the cost of a full-new FTE. So, those are the places where I'm most interested. I've sort of glossed a little bit over the community engagement, and I know that there's some, you know, Cape is some resource, and I know that you also, there's separate concerns and questions there for follow-up that I'm open to, but I just wanted to flag, mindful I've taken plenty of time, and don't want to hug the mic from colleagues nor from you, but that's at least a platform to work forward, at least from my perspective, and open to the Chair or Ms. Tagani-Tapti.
Did you want me to address any of that?
I don't want to, but I also want to do it after this, in addition, whichever. If you have brief comments, but I want to be respectful of others as well.
Well, I will try to say very briefly that the case management is going to be an ongoing issue because it's not going to get better. Most of the, what the companies are coming to now is a subscriber model instead of an upfront model. And so, when the Office got the case management program in 2014, they paid a significant, into the six digits, amount for the case management system with a very low subscriber fee. Those subscriber fees are now going up. Like I said, just, you know, they were locked in for 10 years, and now they're going up significantly. And other companies are seeing the problem with that business model. And so, you know, you've sort of like exhausted the amount you can extract from a customer if you get all the money upfront, so they're now trying to go on the subscriber model. So, any change or upgrade, and even if we did nothing, our subscriber costs are going to start going up probably by a third every single year, until they get to sort of like a peak of what the market can handle.
Okay. I'm passing the management of this meeting to my colleague, Mrs. Spain, with apologies because I forgot our internal division of labor, and I got carried away.
I was just so riveting.
Mr. Chair, it's really not your fault. I'm going to yield. I'll go last. I'll do cleanup.
Your questions?
Any questions from, Chair, Ms. Cunningham, how about you? Yeah, please.
Just to make sure I'm tracking, so on the case management system, what do we spend today that you think is going to be going up by about a third?
So, right now, we spend $23,000 annually. It is going up a third, starting in May, for the next year.
Great, so that's in the budget, the increase there?
Yeah, I have spoken to DMF about that, and that is in the budget, but we anticipate...
And then, what would replace it? It's the fourth one on your list?
No, none of this is on the list to replace it. That's just sort of an ongoing cost that's in the background, and I raised it because, you know, like, this is kind of basic.
Yeah.
But this is the best we got, and it took us almost a year to get this.
And is there, is that the steady state, or are you asking for us to consider sometime in the next year?
That's just sort of on the horizon for you all to know is coming, that whatever we do, the case management costs are going to be going up. I don't know what the solution is. I don't know if it makes sense to stay with who we have or to try to, or getting somebody else.
Great, and I would just tag that in some other system upgrades, we wished we had capitalized them instead of operational budgets. I don't know if that would be the case for you guys. It's a little simpler than some of the others, but keep that in mind. I also just wanted to ask, on body-worn cameras, are you able to estimate kind of the total cost of body-worn cameras for your department at least? And like, at what point are we comfortable that the return on investment for public safety, which is significant, I'm sure, is worth it? Should everybody have them? The costs seem kind of large to me. How are we controlling for that, and what's the trade-off?
So, the costs are large, but I would not want to live in a world without body-worn cameras, having, even as much of a pain as they are administratively, they have helped us, they have helped us know when, you know, when, you know, what someone does doesn't match what their report is. They've helped an incredible amount in officer-involved shootings, because you never had, like, both sides of the story, and now you have as close to an objective piece of evidence as possible. And they've helped us be able to assess, you know, the credibility of the witnesses that the officers are talking to. They've helped us find information that is potentially exculpatory, you know, watching the body worn. So, I wouldn't want to go to a world where we had less information and, you know, less checks on the system than body worn. So, I think that the cost is worth it, but it is not a small cost, and I recognize that. And we have now false churches on body worn, and Metropolitan Transit Police are on body worn, and I thought that Metropolitan Airport Authority had gone on to body worn, but I'm not 100% sure about that.
Great.
But we had asked them, by the way, to make sure that they had about $150,000 in their budget added to supplement what we would have to watch in their body worn, and if they've brought body worn online without doing that, they should not have.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chair, you want me to do my piece, and then I'll turn it over to you?
No, I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
So, one of the... So, one of the, for me, most intriguing and most, like, you know, I have been considering really fundamental for the effectiveness of how your office functions, was the request for an investigator house in your office.
Correct.
And this is a conversation we had already last year, and was kind of intrigued to see how you were interacting with, you know, law enforcement agencies that are not our police, like, for example, Metro Police, and you just mentioned Airport Police, et cetera. And knowing that actually, the number of cases that we have to do that is actually increasing rather than decreasing, is that the correct assessment?
Without having looked at the data, it feels like it, anecdotally, but I'm not sure if the, I'm not sure what the, sort of, what the actual numbers are.
Is it also, is it also true that most Commonwealth Attorney's Offices in, you know, major, Commonwealth Attorney's Offices in Virginia do have?
In major metropolitan areas, yes. I wouldn't say most across the Commonwealth, because we have 120, and some of them have populations of 15,000. But, yeah, some of them have only a single person in the office.
Correct. So I guess what I'm after is, you know, to try to stratify priorities here, so that we, that we have more of an idea of how to, you know, prioritize also thinking about that. On data, there was a lot of conversation already. I find the effort to actually, you know, fine-tune the case management system also an issue for us, because one of the deliverables of the system, if I understand correctly, is also to see how well we are dealing with these cases, how fast we are dealing with these cases, what is the, you know, expenditure or resource intensiveness of these cases. So that has actually insights, not only for your office, but actually for us, too.
It does. It has a tremendous amount of value, if we can get a system in place that would tell us, you know, the average number of court appearances for a certain kind of case, if it could tell us, you know, how to really weight cases, so that we understand how much time certain kinds of cases take, and then distribute workload effectively. It would, it would help us figure out what is a waste of time and what isn't a waste of time. It would help us figure out how effective our programming is, and, you know, how many people tend to send cases to diversion, how many, you know, how many people aren't, are people getting out their discovery in time, that sort of thing. It would help us really make it more, the monitoring of this possible.
Yeah, making the business case for good, for good and effective enforcement. Thank you so much. I yield.
Yes, I'll close up, Mr. Chair, and again, Madam Commonwealth Attorney, thank you for being with us here this evening. I will try to be brief, but I do have a couple of questions to kind of set this conversation. In the past, you've talked about, you know, the Office of the Commonwealth Attorney, your role, being the Chief Law Enforcement Officer for Arlington. I don't think a lot of folks know that, but can you talk a little bit, just for about 30 seconds, that's by state code, what does that mean?
Well, this, yeah, the state code does refer to the Office of the Commonwealth Attorney as the Chief Law Enforcement Officer in the jurisdiction.
Great. So I want to go to your budget request, and what you've highlighted here, much of which I strongly believe, because I arrived at this place where I'm at today, based solely on a large conversation around public safety, right? We all know that to be true. So if I'm looking at these, and I know you haven't prioritized them, I do have a question about, and this is on Slide 9, where we're talking about support vulnerable communities. Is that really perhaps in the, I'm going somewhere with this, is that really a necessity for this year, given everything else that's going on?
It absolutely is. Our jobs as public safety officers is to make sure that the public is safe. People who are in a position of privilege can create safety for themselves. They can live in single-family homes, they can, you know, build fences, they have cushions, but the people in our community that are vulnerable, who are getting exploited, you know, we're going to call immigration, you know, if you don't, if you don't take what I'm going to pay you, even though I promised to pay you something more, or, you know, spouses who are, you know, beating their significant others and say, if you call the police, I'm going to call immigration on you, or you called the police and now I'm going to make sure that you can't get to court, or that you don't get to court, and I'm going to take your subpoena that gets mailed, or I see the officers, the sheriff's office showing up in a sheriff's car, and, you know, deputy coming, and I'm going to make sure that they don't get to you. Those are the people that we need to protect, and that we have an obligation to protect.
Yeah, my final two questions, and perhaps concluding with a comment, I will just say, as I look at Slide 9, it is really a hard lift to support all of this, of course, in the year, but I'll tell you-
Don't ask, the answer is always no.
Of course. But I'll tell you what I am really intrigued by, and I think is greatly needed, you know, your request for a deputy attorney, right? Here, can you talk more about, if you're not able to get one, what else outside of the management and supervision of these 15 attorneys, can that person do in that particular role? I'm just trying to say, can we get a twofer? In a certain sense, will they have to, can a deputy Commonwealth Attorney do some of this work of an investigator, or no?
No. No, as prosecutors, we have a certain level of immunity for the legal, the legal work that we do, and we have to make sure that the investigative work and the legal work don't mesh into each other. And an investigator would be expected to be a witness, and we don't want our victim-witness staff or our lawyers becoming witnesses in cases. So that is, that's not an area that ethically or practically we could-
Yep.
-combine people. What we could do, and this was Mr. DiFranti's idea, is potentially take one of, we have, we have two attorney vacancies right now, that we have an ample number of very qualified attorneys, including people who've been managers for 15 years in the DRJ. We could take one of those vacant positions and turn it into a deputy position.
Yeah.
And the delta then, you know, between the full deputy position and the senior assistant position is going to be somewhere less than $50,000. I would be happy to do that. I would really hope that the county would also then consider giving us the FTE for the investigator and the community engagement, because I think that there's just a lot of misinformation and a lot of need to be out in the community in ways that we haven't been in the past.
Yeah, and I will close with that, I was going to close with the community engagement. You know, we received, can't speak for my colleagues, I know a lot of emails came in, letters of support for your budget request, and I'm very appreciative of that support, so kudos to you. When it comes to community engagement and public safety, line that up against misinformation, disinformation, I'm innately aware of everything that may be going on. We have, you know, seen here in Arlington, where there are certain silos of information that is being shared, named the department, named the office, and is it equal and fair across the board? That's probably the jury's out for discussion. I think there's more work you could be doing in your office as it relates to community engagement and sharing of information altogether. So I look forward to a few more conversations as we get through the cycle. Again, it's tough, but I like where you're headed. I want to see more, more of our offices getting out in the community. We had our Constitutional Officer here from the revenue here earlier, and I talked, you know, briefly about what she's been able to do in a year.
Mm-hmm.
Her level of community engagement, lining that up against years past. Nothing against my good friend Ingrid Morrow, love her to death, but you can see it, and it matters, right? It really matters. So thank you for putting this forward, barring any questions. I don't have any more, I'll turn it back over to the Chair.
I mean, I will add, if I may, that we do a lot in the office on a daily and weekly basis that nobody knows about, because we are so busy doing it that we don't have time to talk about it. And I would be delighted to be able to have a, you know, weekly press release or a weekly, you know, social media post, that, in addition to everything else, but this just seems like the most basic thing that we can't really find time to do, about like, these are the cases that got resolved this week, this is how many people we put in diversion this week, these are how many people successfully completed diversion this week. And we need somebody to be tracking that, we need somebody to be, you know, formulating it, and then sending it out in ways that attorneys who are dealing with 100-plus caseloads just can't do.
Yeah, and I think it's deeper than just a newsletter and social media. It's great, that's great.
I said it's just a piece of, like, one little small piece.
You need a person, you need a warm body in our neighborhoods across Arlington-
Absolutely.
-talking about the work and answering the questions that may be coming in as it relates to the role of your office and what you're doing.
Absolutely, and I would happily accompany them, because they would take some of the load of the other things that I do off of my plate.
So this concludes, right? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I know you want to fill your lap.
I can't give you an investigator, but I can give this.
This is for you.
Thank you. I think that's actually a bribe.
A bribe?
Yeah.
It's under our $20 limit.
Oh, okay.
With tariffs and everything, it's already over the-
Hello, what a pleasure.
China, long time no see.
Nice to see you again.
Hello.
Hello.
You want me to read this? When we're ready? Oh. Okay.
Are you going to start without, or, okay?
We're going to start where?
Hello, thank you for having us today. I'm Gretchen, the General Register for Arlington County, and I'll be presenting the budget presentation on behalf of the Electoral Board and the General Registarr's Office. Today, I have with me my Chief Deputy, Alyssa Myers, who you've probably seen around the hallways here. So-
Joe?
Margaret. Okay. So the mission of our office is to maintain an accurate list of registered voters and to run efficient elections in an open, transparent, equitable, and secure manner. Next slide, please. So our highlights from 2025 are obviously a presidential election. We ran, we had around 100, over 130,000 voters cast ballots here in Arlington. As a part of this election in the fall, we published and mailed our very first voter guide to all actively-registered voters as of August last year, and I'm happy to report that that initiative came in 50% under what I had budgeted, because I was able to lock into a nonprofit postage rate, which I'm very proud that we were able to get a permit and be able to do that. In addition, last fall, we also partnered with the CAPE team here in Arlington, under the county manager, to produce educational videos, and these videos are supposed to be durable, meaning we can use them each fall. They weren't specific to the presidential, so we'll be able to use them as part of outreach and education initiatives moving forward. We also, last year, implemented ranked choice voting for the first time in a general election anywhere in Virginia, and I will say, things went successfully. So for that presidential election, we also ran four early voting sites and had our nine dropbox locations. 60% of the voters that cast ballots last fall did so before the election. And then, one of the new things that we also did this year, we actually just did on Saturday, is we ran a regional candidate training for anybody who was interested in running for office here in Virginia. We partnered with Prince William County, so we conducted this training out in Manassas, and it's open to anybody who is interested in running for office. Next slide, please. So our highlights for next fiscal year are new voting equipment. We will be replacing our voting systems. This will be only the fifth voting machine procurement that Arlington has ever made, so it is quite a big deal for our office, it's not something we do routinely. And so also, on the deck this year is the Electoral Board will be updating its strategic plan that was last updated in 2019, and we think, coming from that, we might have some long-term funding priorities for the Board next year, as we go through this process of updating that plan. And then, obviously, in the 2025, or this fiscal year, we have the 2025 general election, which has the Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, County Board, and School Board. It's worth noting that this year is the year that the races in Virginia are historically the closest. When you go back and look at recounts, or when elections ended in a tie, it always happens in the gubernatorial year, which means emotions can be very high, it does put, weirdly, a lot of strain on our office. Yeah, and like I said, the Attorney General's race in 2015 came down to 300 votes statewide out of 3 million cast, so it can be extremely tight in a governor's race. Next slide, please. Our summary of changes from this last fiscal year to this fiscal year. We are eliminating the one-time funding that was given to us for the presidential election, and we are getting a slight, sorry, grant revenue increase due to, so we are getting a slight increase due to state reimbursement, so. Yeah. Yeah, next slide, please. And as we look forward to the future, one of the big concerns for me is the polling place capacity. So Arlington County has some of the largest precincts here in Virginia. We have the third-largest, 18th-largest, and 30th-largest statewide out of thousands of precincts in Virginia. They are all located in Roslyn, which is very convenient, because this is where our office is, so we aren't seeing very long lines on Election Day, because these voters can vote early at our office before Election Day. But it is a concern, because as you guys are aware, we obviously have increasing growth, especially along the metro corridors with thousands of units, two people or three people can live in those units, so each one of those can translate to a lot of voters. And then, obviously, something that we're continuing to monitor, and once again, we expect the Electoral Board will take up in their strategic plan, is looking at our compensation for our election officers, our poll workers. Our rates do lag the regional averages by, it's anywhere between $50 to $100 per position. So that concludes my presentation.
Well, thank you, Gretchen, that was quick. Colleagues, questions?
Mr. Squad Leader, or Mr. Spain?
I get one shot at this, and you want to give me a hard time, totally get it.
No, it's great. I guess, I'm not trying to prompt other questions, I just thought it would be a time to maybe not have the conversation here, but to prompt, we had the conversation a week or two ago about ranked choice. It should be, I think, CBO office, not you guys, because of the issues that we talked about. Mr. Manager, maybe, or Gretchen, how do we get ready if, and I made a commitment, to trying to find one time to do an RFP for some outreach? And there is other RFPs that have been done, but it's a lot of work that we don't see? And so, is that reachable, you know? If we want to do that, can we, do we stay apolitical enough, but have enough staff capacity to own it in the county board office, to do what Mr. Spain was mentioning, and I don't think I'm the only one talking about it? So is that a later conversation? Is it, can we not do it?
Well, so Gretchen and I, you may have thought we were paying attention to the conversation on Saturday, but she and I were talking about this. So we have the ability with our communications and public engagement staff, and we have outside consultants that we can use, if you're interested in providing funding for that, we can make that happen. And I think, though, that you need to also have a conversation with the registrar about what's appropriate, because I think she has things she can't do, things that we can do, there's the policy conversation about what we should do, and that is something you have to be very clear about giving us guidance. So now is a perfect time- about giving us guidance. So now is a perfect time to have that conversation.
I mean, I want to stay on time, and I'm mindful of other colleagues, but I do wonder if you had quick thoughts that you'd share.
So one of the questions I've had throughout the entire implementation of ranked choice voting is what would meaningful outreach look like? So that would be the question. I mean, is it yard signs and median strips? Is it going to meetings in the community, civic association meetings? Like what exactly? And that's the one thing that I've struggled to really generate any consensus on, on what exactly meaningful outreach would look like for ranked choice voting. So we've done the best we can. We've tried to create toolkits so that anybody in the community can go out and talk to their friends and neighbors or their voters about ranked choice voting. But short of really defining what that outreach program would look like, it is, it has been a struggle.
And you clearly did ask us last year, and I was on the board, and I sort of, so I have to take some ownership of not, we said sort of we would work this, but we didn't do as much as we could have. And so the question for me then becomes, is it budget guidance that we're doing on this on one time? Or it doesn't, we don't have to decide that now, but for me at least, the what might be community meetings, a little bit more in interaction more than just the yard signs. And then I'm going to want to put something in writing at some point about what we're talking about, because last year, I don't know that we really did. And that ain't, we didn't follow through as a result. So that's 10 cents of thoughts, and I'll yield.
Ms. Coffey?
Yeah, I'll pick up there a little bit, which is that I think part of what's hard about defining what meaningful outreach looks like is that it, you know, meaningful outreach hits, for ranked choice voting, hits the same barriers that our meaningful outreach on every other topic hits, which is, you know, we could pay someone to go knock on doors, but they're still not going to be able to get in most of our multi-unit buildings. So we sent mail to every registered voter last year. Well, not everyone really looks at their mail or pays that much attention. Or I can say that I got three of our mailers because two people are still registered at my address who do not live with me. And so, you know, there are those kind of structural systemic barriers where I think going, you know, I know you have been to a lot of community events, any event that had, any group that has invited you, I know that you went and you provided your training, and I think that's really great. But that's still hitting the same people who probably are most tuned in anyways. And so I think part of the problem with solving this for ranked choice voting is really solving it for our engagement methodology writ large. And, you know, as much as I think we all have ideas and hopes and dreams, I don't know that any of us have come up with the magic ingredient that's going to bring people into the conversation who aren't opting into that conversation themselves. So I would be interested in some more external contracting, I think, to have people whose job and expertise it is to reach the unreachable, you know, constituencies in our community rather than, I think if we go through our normal channels, we're going to have our normal results. And that's not a ding on anything that's happening. It's just engagement and outreach is really, really hard, time, and human labor intensive. And so there are some limitations there. I actually was going to ask about our precinct capacity issue, which I do think is quite an interesting question. I think we're running out of public spaces. And so two questions on this topic. One, is there a reason that the Bosman Center, even though it's an early voting location, isn't an election day voting location? Because that is, you know, proximate to where these three really crowded precincts are. And then two, what is the process for drawing or potentially creating new precincts within a county? Is that something the Electoral Board does? How does that come to be?
So the reason that we don't use this building as a polling location on Election Day is because, quite honestly, this is where a lot of voters come on Election Day trying to vote anyway, because this is the office, the address listed as their voter registration office. And so we spend most of our day getting voters to the right polling location. And we certainly could always have this building as a polling location, but my concern, especially when we get to that seven o'clock deadline at the end of the day, is because if they need to be over at Innovation School, they can make it if they're here at 6:50. But if they're in a line for 10 minutes, then they're not going to make it to the right polling location. So that's been the reasoning in the past is because we actually, election night, we send somebody to the lobby with the poll book just to get voters to the right polling location, because usually it's one of the three within, we have six polling locations within a mile of this office. So, yeah. So that's the logic behind. Like I said, it's always an option, but that's why we haven't done it in the past. In terms of drawing a new polling location, my statutory obligation as registrar is to notify the county board when a precinct has more than, I believe it's 5,000 people show up to vote in a presidential election. We did not hit that at this. We had, yeah, wait, no, it's 4,000 in a presidential election, and you cannot establish a precinct with more than 5,000 voters in it. Sorry, sorry for that. So we did not, we did have a precinct where more than 4,000 people voted, but because 60% of people voted before Election Day, it does not mean that they voted at that precinct on Election Day. So this is where we start really getting into the legal weeds of things. The terms of, historically, our office has brought forward polling place recommendations. So we would go out and try to find a polling location, then recommend the precinct boundaries for that location. That has become increasingly complicated because our office does not have any negotiating authority or power when it comes to negotiating with private property managers, whereas the county has a lot more authority in negotiating use of some of these spaces. We have worked with the Planning Commission, so we do have site plan agreements for polling locations that do put into residential polling locations. And we do have a few, especially in the Crystal City, Pentagon City area, that we could leverage to add polling locations there. So like I said, we do have options. It just has to be a conversation between us and a couple of their entities of what really are our legal, like what are our options that we can do. And with the polling, new polling, every time you move a polling location or create a polling location, the community does, even if you're trying to do it for their benefit, the community will complain because they don't think that you're doing it for their benefit. And so that's always been a challenge in the past. So we don't make changes unless we absolutely have to, like that building is not accessible anymore. So, yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
We had a bit of this conversation during the update on ranked choice. Can you tell us a little bit about the procurement for the machines and whether, I think I heard a channel of it might make sense to defer, given the update cycles and maybe given the closeness of this election and?
Yeah. So that's something we're evaluating with each of the vendors that we've contacted is we certainly want to know what their plan is to make sure they're compliant with those new federal requirements that should pass. They have passed. It's just now voting machine vendors are putting this stuff through certification. So like I said, we're just building that into the procurement so that when we go to procure, we're going to know that, or the hope is that we will know that this vendor does have a compliant product, or it will be compliant once it gets, finishes its necessary state certifications.
And so it sounds like we don't know fully yet, but is it true that there might be a recommendation to defer if what we get back is?
I've already deferred, because essentially, we were trying to get someone for this year, but I don't, it might be the fall. I feel like the fall still might be an outlier, but I'm not willing to say like we won't have new machines by the fall. But I do think this fiscal year, by this point next year, we will have something that will move.
So from a budget perspective, it's irrelevant.
Yeah. The time is now. We've definitely hit the point where I have pushed it out as long as I can. But there are reasons for why I've been pushing it out, because I needed to get, the vendors needed to get how they were going to comply with the new regulations. And I think we're at a place where they've done that. So.
Great. Thank you.
So, thank you again. I just want to piggyback off of what my colleague Ms. Coffey talked about. And I wholeheartedly agree that, you know, when we're trying to find meaning, what does meaningful outreach look like, coupled with perhaps barriers and using the equity analysis, I wholeheartedly believe it's going to have to be an external agency that help us meet whatever those benchmarks are that we're going to define. You know, when we look at what you were able to do last year through mail and working with CAPE, and also coupled with looking at some of the analysis that was done by the county, again, if we're making data-driven decisions, I don't think there's enough there, right, to make an informed decision. I think there's folks who are passionate about RCV, who really are all-in, but I think I don't have, I don't see the mandate, right? And I think it's not that people don't love or won't mind it. It's just I'd much rather people be educated or know about it, right? A lot of folks are showing up at polling sites and learning about ranked choice voting at that time. Not to say you haven't done your due diligence, right? But to something Ms. Coffey said, we may have to look external to get people who are, and I think in neighborhoods knocking on doors, civic associations, those are great, neighborhood associations, those are great, but I think there's more work to be done. And Mr. Manager, I hope we can kind of figure something out as we move forward. The last question, that was just a statement, but the last question I have, or question I have for you. When we think about polling place and capacity, I heard some information before I came on the board about the Aquatic Center and the future there as far as a polling site. What are we looking at this year? Are we going to use it? Was it, is it not at, what's going to be your recommendation, you think?
If it were up to me, I would be redrawing all of the precinct boundary lines in the entire Crystal City, Pentagon City area. But that has to be, that's a big list for an office with eight people because we're talking about doing, communicate, like, that's what I'm saying. Every time you move a location, even if you're doing it, because we need to go back to the drawing board and reconfigure things, because I don't want to have to make you walk a mile to go vote. But, and I can't just add that precinct without redrawing the lines of a lot of other precincts. So like I said, it is kind of a more thorough evaluation of what really makes sense for that community. And sometimes precinct lines are drawn such that a lot of our precinct lines there are drawn based off the 2011 districts. So it doesn't make sense for a voter that's way up here to be voting down in Oak Ridge Elementary School. But the reason that precinct line was drawn is it needed to be drawn that way for districts in 2011. But without a reason to go in and change something, we just are very hesitant to change something.
But you would probably state for the record that that particular location did not get used in a manner which we had expected, or yes?
Um, so, so this, it's, so Long Bridge was definitely our lowest turnout, but it is a new facility for a lot of people, just in the county in general. And I would, so like I said, it was our lowest turnout precinct during early voting. But I would hesitate to say, don't ever use it again, because we are at a, we are at capacity for how many voters we can process on the third floor of this building. So even if they only had 200 voters in a day, those were 200 voters that didn't come here. And on the busiest days that we were here, we need those other, like, the only reason we open up the additional early voting sites really for us is because we just are at capacity here. We have to get that traffic out of this building and elsewhere in the county. And so anything we can do to reduce the number of people coming here, for me, is a plus. Is Long Bridge needed all day, every day, for every election? No, it's certainly not. The Electoral Board is even recommending that it not be used in a primary, but it's not a site that we want to disregard completely.
Great. Again, thank you. I saw your key budget considerations as for us, stifens for poll workers, and that we lag behind. So we'll put some, really some thought into that. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair. I'll turn it back over to you as we close out. And thank you, Gretchen and team, and kudos to all the workers who support us not only in all of our elections, because sometimes out there in that heat and in that cold and that rain, they put in the work for us. So thank you. Kudos to them, all right?
Yes. Yeah, no, absolutely. Elections do not run without all of our election officers.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Absolutely. Election officers, good deep gratitude. I'm thanking you, and over to Mr. DeFranti for the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're going to the magistrate.
To the magistrate.
Come on up. And I'm mindful with our clerk of court and our public defender that we are running a few minutes late. We will be, we will listen, engage with our magistrate. We will also seek to move expeditiously. So it's over to you, Mr. Magistrate, for your presentation. Do you want to pull up the first slide? Whoever is the magic slide controller. And then the second. Next.
That one wasn't going to get us very far.
Put your microphone.
Oh, red, there you go. Mr. Adam.
My name is Bruce Adam. I'm the chief magistrate for Arlington County. It's actually the 17th Judicial District of Virginia, which encompasses Falls Church as well. We are the only judicial, let's go to the next slide. We're the only judicial officers in the state of Virginia. Magistrate system is the ones who operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. You know, we're the ones who issue all the warrants and deny those that don't need, shouldn't be issued. We hold bond hearing, all the initial bond hearings. And we also bond people out who have, who need to get bonded out. And we're also the ones who handle and issue emergency custody orders and temporary detention orders for mentally ill people, as well as ESROs, which are a relatively new concept to remove the guns from people who are dangerous to themselves or others. We do a lot of other things as well, but in the interest of brevity, those are some of the key things we deal with. Next, please. And we can go to the next one. Let the revenues speak for themselves. We're not a revenue magnet, to say the least. Next one, please. Basically, there's eight, there's nine of us that work by office, one part-timer. I have seven full-time magistrates and myself. All of us are attorneys, and all of us with considerable experience before we came to the job we now have. As far as the figures go, they speak for themselves up through this year. I cannot, you know, I was asked for estimates for the years going into the future. I don't have a crystal ball. Things can get worse or better depending on a whole lot of things that I have zero control over. And so take those with a grain of salt. Next one, please. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. That was succinct.
I would go as quickly as I could.
So succinct. It was one year, colleagues, I think Mr. Karen, maybe multiple people remember, Mr. Adams said, "Our chairs are all broken." And Chair Garvey at the time said, "Okay, let's get you some new chairs." So we want to be, is there anything that is like that? You know, I am so mindful from the ride-alongs that I've done, and I imagine colleagues are too, that you face critical decisions that are very important for safety. Is there anything glaring that you wanted to say briefly, like chairs or, last year you said you had, you had lost?
That's what we're working on now is, we're working on, I was told it wasn't going to make it into this budget, but we were going to be coming up with something. This carpet we have now, it's probably about 20 years ago, it was put in, and we've been, it's in swatches, and they gave us extra swatches. We've been periodically getting someone to, because we walk on everything 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and.
So Mr. Man. We're getting, we're getting you carpet.
Great.
I promise.
Great. That's sort of.
And you don't have to wait till July 1st. It's coming soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning it.
I appreciate it. Yeah, that was one of the things we were working on that I was told was left out of this, that I was going to be reaching out to you soon.
Sure.
Since you brought it up, I figured I'd put it on your radar. No one had yet.
Before we let you out too quickly, I see a light from Ms. Cunningham. Okay. So we very much appreciate the work. I want to give full opportunity, anyone else have questions, while also managing our timing. I just think we would want to reiterate. questions, while also managing our timing. I just think we would want to reiterate many years of service, glad that the staffing is coming, grateful for your work, because you are a critical piece of safety. If there's a time sensitivity issue, your team is, is making important calls. So, thank you, Mr. Adam.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Sure. Thanks for your patience.
Send us a picture of the carpet.
Next up, Mr. Clerk of the Court, Mr. Ferguson. And unless we're doing a break, I think...
Public defender.
Oh, public defender. Whoa. We have a, come on up the public defender. It's all my fault on that.
Sorry, Paul.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ferguson. But we have a, congratulations to our new public defender, Ms. Carpenter. And I know that it is important, and thank you for your patience. We are 14 minutes late. That's sooner than in any other budget year that I'm remembering with constitutionals, to be honest. But Ms. Carpenter, over to you for your presentation.
All right. Thank you so much. I have with me Rachel Collins, who's the senior assistant public defender in our office, and the only other managing attorney in our office, just so you know how our structure is, and the extent to which we are, I guess, understaffed, lean, yes. So, up first, our department mission, it remains the same as always, to protect and defend the rights and dignity of our clients through zealous compassionate, high-quality legal advocacy. As public defenders, and of course, defense attorneys, our primary responsibility is representing our clients. We are assigned individual clients and appointed them from the courts, and our duty is to represent them and their interests from the time we are appointed to their cases until their cases are concluded. And so, that is what we seek to do every day when we come in. Next slide, please. So, within the state, there's the public defender system, which is the Indigent Defense Commission. And so, we are one of a number of offices, but our widely viewed as one of the premier offices, we are able to attract highly qualified candidates for our positions. Of course, people want to live in Arlington, be close to DC, and of course, we are grateful that we're able to offer a more competitive salary than some of the outside jurisdictions, more in the countryside. However, we do want to be able to keep our salaries at least at pace with other surrounding counties. I think almost all of the surrounding counties now around Northern Virginia and a number of the other cities have pretty substantial county supplements as well. So, we do want to be able to continue to attract people to work here. It is, of course, one of the highest or the highest cost of living areas to live and work in. So, we want to be able to attract those people to live here, and also for them to be able to, to work in a job that they care about, and also live in this community or near enough by. As far as who we represent, we, we are appointed to any sort of case that carries the potential of jail time in Arlington County. And so, we represent children under 18 in the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court, and adults charged with all sorts of crimes from the least serious. Fortunately, there's a lot fewer traffic cases than we used to have, but anything from simple traffic cases like driving without a license, or reckless driving, all the way up to the most serious cases that happen in the county. And typically, we are getting that handful of very serious cases that come through the county in any given year. We also, of course, work with all of the other community partners that serve our clients and that we work with as part of our daily court responsibilities. So, OAR, of course, received a nice grant this year and has been doing really wonderful work with our clients through diversion programming and by continuing their reentry services. Many of our clients come into jail, and then, if they get out months later, they, they have nothing when they're leaving. And so, helping them have a softer landing so that they hopefully never end up there again is a really important part of our responsibility, because our goal, of course, is to represent our clients to the best of their ability, to the best of our ability, but also to keep them from coming back to being our clients again, from keeping them engaged in the services that we are able to, helping them take advantage of the opportunities, and avoiding being back here. We're working with Restorative Justice, Restorative Arlington. We're regularly, of course, working with DHS, other service providers, regardless of where they're located. The jail, we're going in and out of the jail every single day, working with the medical staff, the forensic staff, the sheriff's office staff, Recovery Court, BHD, and I'll touch on this later, but many clients who come through are suffering from serious mental illness and may need a competency evaluation early on. And so, I think, I know we've talked about this a lot in recent years, but the number of those cases and the number of people with acute mental illness is, has just skyrocketed since COVID. It has not gone down. It's well-known in the behavioral health community that Arlington is sending the highest number of people for restoration at a hospital. And so, we have the vast majority of those clients who are getting evaluated and then getting sent down. And so, that involves us to be very knowledgeable about competency restoration law. Some of those cases may turn into insanity cases. And so, lawyers in our office have to be very adept at understanding and knowing how to figure out the law, working with experts in those fields, and helping identify the cases where those sorts of evaluations are appropriate. Next slide, please. So, as far as budget highlights, our case numbers, we talked last year about having the highest ever caseload in the history of our office. And it was just over 2,500 cases. And we had thought the case numbers were lower, and it turns out they were actually just as high. We were just above 2,500 again last year. And it's definitely taken a huge toll. It's, it's a lot of cases. Each individual case is assigned to one attorney, and in the cases of some serious cases, or maybe with some new attorneys, they might have two attorneys on them. But that means if we're dealing on average with 200 cases a year each, then we're, we have 200 individual clients that we are primarily responsible for. Primarily responsible for helping them understand what's going on, for being the ones who review their discovery on their cases, doing the legal research on their cases, and attending all of their hearings, up to and including trial. We are in a rebuilding phase in our office right now. We did have quite a bit of turnover last year. And so, it's, it's not just in one department. It's in the administrative staff, in the non-attorney staff, and in the attorney staff as well. So, we're working very diligently. We have four brand-new attorneys who just passed the bar here in Virginia. So, we're working to train them and help them understand both their job duties, as well as the opportunities for them to advocate for their clients and find resources here in Arlington. So, our, our staffing levels are the same. The only change this year, and we're very grateful to the county, is the county paralegal position that we had had, I believe, for about three years, turned into a county attorney, county-funded attorney position. And we were able to hire one of our prior interns, who has a master in social, masters in social work, and also had four years of experience prior to law school, working with people with mental illness. And so, she is primarily taking our serious mental illness cases. She is a new attorney, and so, they're lower level right now. But a lot of our competency restoration cases, a lot of interaction with people in the jail who are not doing well, interaction with a lot of different county employees and service providers. And she's also attending our alternate dockets. So, other than that, our, our staffing remains the same. The number of people in our office has remained the same over the past few years with that one tweak in the last year. Just briefly going through the, the remaining items here. Pre-trial reform, so, when we get a case, we get a call from the court saying, "You've been appointed to this case." And many of our clients, most of our clients actually start out being in custody. And so, we then immediately have someone who is in custody. They may have been in custody if it's Monday or after a long weekend. They may have been in for two or three days. And this is deemed to be the most critical time in someone who is being charged with a crime's future life, because their family may not know where they are, their job, they may lose their job, they could lose their housing. There's a lot of things that are in the balance right when someone gets arrested. And so, we work to minimize that amount of time as much as possible for those people who are going to get out. And we routinely call in bond motions for the next day, and then prep all of them in the afternoon, and then are prepared the next morning for those. But we also are, are involved in, I would say, more complex release planning or bond planning, where someone, the judge is indicating they would like to release the person to the community, but they want more programming, more verification of where they can go, how they're going to get there, and that sort of thing. And so, much of that falls on us. With the switch from our one staff member to an attorney, we actually have, we have three legal assistants, one office manager, one paralegal, which is currently vacant due to JD Spain poaching our paralegal. So, hope you are...
Excuse me. Blaming on the clerk. There is accountability, Mrs. Spain.
You're very fortunate and lucky to have her.
But only one author is paralegal?
Only one author has paralegal position, yes. And then, two investigators and one mitigation specialist. So, for example, if we're looking into some sort of discharge planning, whether it's for pre-trial, where we're trying to get someone out so they can help assist their case and not have their life disrupted, then it's, it's going to be us, the attorney assigned, and the mitigation specialist or the paralegal. That's the only staff that we have that can do that. And certainly, that's not any of those people's main job. So, that was why one of our asks this year was for a, we called it a social worker position or a paralegal position, but really, it would be a reentry type position that helps match people to programming. And it's not, so many of our clients are not from Arlington. They might be from DC, many, many from DC, Maryland, from other Virginia jurisdictions. And of course, we have people from out of state as well. And so, we are working to connect people with services in all those other places as well, which involves really reinventing, learning what the social services are there, and helping figure out how that can work with Arlington. Of course, many of our cases do end in a plea eventually, probably 90% or so, and that means our clients get sentenced. And so, we're helping them on the more serious cases, where they might end up on felony probation, or where they're looking at a term of years. We're frequently helping them get into some sort of long-term program, or helping the judge doing the sentencing understand their background. The vast majority of our clients are black, brown, from immigrant backgrounds. And so, one of our tasks is to do a social history of our clients, pool their medical records, their school records, and often help people who are not from the same background as them understand how they ended up where they are, and, you know, what, what their future looks like, and how, I guess, the, the court can feel confident in their safety in the community. Of course, we're working with all the other programs I talked about, the Behavioral Health Docket, Recovery Court, Restorative Arlington, OAR Divergence, et cetera. Community engagement, we do, of course, having represented and worked with what I consider one of the most vulnerable population in Arlington, we do want to help advocate for the services that we think are needed and that we see regularly are needed. We also participate in things such as the Expungement Fair and other sorts of community engagement. Of course, the supplements help us to retain, attract and retain diverse and talented staff. Our main ask this year, and actually, I'll just, next slide, please, is our focus on equity. So, our main ask this year is that we're seeking to match the supplement percentage for non-attorney staff with the attorney staff percentage. Having run the metrics on it, it's, it's not a huge ask or a huge lift just to bump them up. Even, they're at 15% supplement right now. Our entry-level attorneys are at 22.5% supplement, which was, they were a little lower just based on parity with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and the remainder of the attorneys are at 25.5%. And so, if you, even focusing on parity, just looking at comparable other paralegal positions, office manager positions, positions such as, you know, victim witness, or police investigation, things like that, the salaries are much higher in those other offices. And so, of course, it allows people who, you know, don't necessarily come from wealthy backgrounds, or don't have a partner who's also working, or is working a high-paying job, to continue to work in our office and to continue to contribute to our community. So, just bumping the staff up 7.5% is about a little over 30K, and bumping them up, I guess, 15% would put it at about, it would be about $46,000 was our calculation for the county. And I think that would be a really meaningful increase to each of them, the, the eight members of our office who are not attorneys. Next slide, please. I think there were no significant changes proposed. I just listed the, the main two. The number one, of course, is supplementing the non-attorney staff, and the number two would be getting the paralegal or social worker position. And we actually thought it could even be something more of like a fellowship, where we hire a one-year, someone for a one-year term. And, you know, maybe that would help keep costs down or something like that. But there's a lot of really enthusiastic recent graduates, either from college or from grad school, who I think would be really interested in that sort of position. And the one picture is our three new attorneys, one of whom is the mental health attorney. So, they all got sworn in, in the Arlington County Circuit Court last fall.
I think you covered the next slide.
Are they still smiling?
For the most part. They got a fourth person, so their, their load got lightened a little bit. And the Commonwealth did approve a 3% raise effective July 1 for state employees. So, that would include everyone in our office except the one county employee. So, I think there could be a small tweak needed to either match percentages, or for the, the one county-funded position to match the state-funded position at that point.
When's that effective?
July 1. All right. Next slide, please. I think I largely covered most of this, but our diversity is our strength. It helps us better represent the people who are appointed to us, who need our services, and it helps us advocate for a necessary investment and changes in our community and services that those people need. So, happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. And I'm, congratulations again. Had a great prior leader, and also thrilled for your leadership. And thank you for doing the score, or the, the cost, ongoing cost of the 25.5%. Whenever we have ongoing, we have to point to things that we will cut. And I cannot do that at this point today, but I can say that I will be looking for this. This is, there's no criminal justice position, with the possible exception of an additional pre-trial position in the Sheriff's Department. That is more of a priority for me at this moment. I'd love to get personally, love to get this, the cost of the one other person who's county employee to keep them in line. In our conversations, you've shown so clearly how much you care about your entire office, and that little piece could mean a huge thing for morale in addition to the, to the others. So, that's at least of interest to me. On the reentry person, I love that you're talking about one-year fellowships, which is definitely, in my unbiased opinion, and DMF will entirely agree, a one-time cost, and not an ongoing cost. And so, that will be a, because we don't have any ongoing. So, that would be of interest in a one-time way to me. I can't say that I know that I could point to other ways that I could cut an ongoing of 80 to 100K in this budget. So, I'm not going to claim for it. That's plenty of me filibustering, Brian Stevenson, Gideon's trumpet. This is personally important to me. Ms. Collins, thank you for your work in addition to Ms. Carpenter. I was once a baby lawyer. I never did this job. It was harder, this job is harder. But just make sure your people know that we care about their work. And so, I don't mean to dominate this. That's Ms. Coffey.
Thanks, Mr. De Franti. I, I would just echo support for both the pay supplement and looking into a reentry specialist, whatever. whatever that might look like. I think, I think those are the most critical things that we could be supporting. And I know that you all do so much with so little. And so, I have one question that's kind of a 101, how does this all work question? And then, a little bit of a deeper question that's less about your budget and more about questions we might ask in other work sessions. So, one, how is it decided how many attorneys are staffed for the office? Because I don't believe we get to choose that. That comes from VIDC. So what criteria do they look at when they're figuring out how much money they should give to you all?
So, each office is allotted a certain number of attorneys. Our office initially was allotted 13 attorneys back when it was founded in 2004. We were initially not appointed many cases in the General District Court, and so, we lost three of those positions prior to me starting in the office. And it took us a little over 10 years to get two of those slots back, which we did get when the VIDC reassessed the balance across the state and allocated some positions to some offices. I think they got some expansion positions, but also took some positions away from some counties that had less work. I don't think that is likely to change anytime soon at all. And so, we do have the 13th attorney, which is the county position.
Great. No, that's really helpful, though, because I think you all do, again, so much with so little. And, you know, my other question that I think has come up in past discussions as well is just access to your own clients in jail. I know that there have been staffing shortages on their end, and that makes it harder for you to do your job when you can't actually talk with your clients. Has that improved at all over the last year? Where are we at? Do you feel like, you know, is that a conversation that we need to have again this year about how we can ensure that you all are getting to your clients in a timely fashion?
That's a really good question. I know the Sheriff's Office is struggling and is very short-staffed. And I know many of them are working very hard to help get us into units, but I know it's a challenge. If their staffing is low, then they have limited people that they can reallocate to help us get to people. I mean, I think we are meeting with the Sheriff's Office regularly. Of course, we work with them all the time, in court and in the jail every single day. But, I mean, it remains a challenge to get through to our clients reliably on the phone. Partially, if different units are on lockdown or if someone is out or something like that, then they're not allowed taking people out of a cell to come to a phone call. If we go in person, then, you know, it's the staffing required based on that individual detainee's security level, where they're located, and that sort of thing. So, it's definitely a complex process, I would say.
Yeah. I really appreciate that. I think that was all, but we will ask staff for a cost on the reentry position.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. Mr. Spain.
One, thank you for coming out today. This is more of a, not reflected so much in your budget. I see that our SMI clientele, those numbers are continually to increase, probably overburdening, putting stressors on your office. So my question is, how can we help with your employee wellness? Because that in itself can also be an issue. When you talk about burnout, is there anything we can do? What programs are in place to help you and your team or if there needs to be anything in addition? Because this is stressful work. I mean, when you're talking about the numbers of seriously mentally ill folks that increasing, and you're having to deal with that with a compressed number, I can only imagine what you're going through. So, can you talk to us a little bit about that? What ways are you using to decompress?
We don't have any official ways. There is no, we haven't had any sort of budget for anything like that. So, yeah, so, yes, we will accept anything in that regard.
Well, another conversation to be had. I know we have some level of employee assistance programming here from the county that's probably tied to our healthcare system, but maybe that too is worthy of another conversation, Mr. Manager, how we can help the public defenders and the employee wellness. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Cunningham, thank you, Ms. Spain.
I'm curious. You mentioned communications and sort of the desire to get out in the community and explain what you do so that it just works better. Have you had a budget for that or have you had, it's just like the corner of your desk on the 100th hour? Is there something that would be helpful, again, in a one-time fashion to get you a refresh of materials or to partner with sheriff or magistrate or others to kind of have a refresh? Is there anything like that that's sort of on your mind for this year or next?
I do not have anything specific in mind, but I'm sure that we could make great use of any, even small funding or something like that, just to, I don't know, even help beef up office technology or paperwork or things like that.
Great. And then, I think your point about the kind of reentry coordination particularly into other jurisdictions, which is the largest piece of that. I wonder if anyone here knows. I certainly don't. Whether COG has had a role in trying to make that coordination a little bit better, because presumably, everyone's having it in some version across the region. Any memory?
It's been talked about for as long as I've been here. I don't think there's anything that approaches an effective effort there.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah, I think you would agree, Matt.
Absolutely. And then, just last one is, some of your colleagues within the systems are here and some will probably watch this again later. Is there anything that the rest of us can do and the courts or others could do to ease your, you know, improve your efficiencies and get you a little bit more sleep? Is, you know, you mentioned sheriff staffing. Is there anything else on your wish list?
I do think the reentry coordinator or paralegal would go a long ways to that, because instead of other people having to chip in and just do it in addition to their jobs, I think someone could easily do it as a full-time job. So that, I think, would be really helpful.
Great. And then, I'll echo everything everyone else said without re-saying it, but thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's relevant to that. One of the most dismal places in this county is the third floor of the jail. So, and I've seen what this means for you. So, pretrial and pretrial release is extremely important, and I know that you have been advocating for that. The question is, is there any lever we can pull here to make that happen more often and more efficiently? Or is that completely outside of your office?
I mean, I do think there are a lot of gaps between, when we say we want someone to get out and we want a plan, what that looks like to make it reality. I think many, most of us leave court or for the non-attorney staff receive messages from us where we feel like, you know, the prosecutor's office is supportive of the person being released and the court is supportive of the person being released if conditions are in place. And then, we feel this great burden of our client being in jail unless and until we put in the legwork to come up with a plan. And so, I think, you know, there's different parts of the community. The bond diversion program is running again. The OAR diversion program is helping as well. But I think there's so many, you know, except for the programs where people qualify through those sorts of things, I think we do feel a great deal of responsibility for working to make that sort of thing happen, because just, you know, knowing that you're the one preventing someone from having a plan that allows them to get out of jail sooner is a heavy burden.
So, I know how difficult it is to coordinate so many and to get one outcome, right? But it is for us, I think, of critical importance to be able to accomplish that. First of all, it's also financially far, far more efficient to be cynically precise, since we are in a budget work session, right? So, what would it take?
I mean, one of the problems we did have this year, there was a huge deficit of shelter beds. We were unable to get people into shelters for months at some point last year. I know the hypothermia shelter was way overfull this winter. Of course, it was very cold the last few months. If our clients aren't Arlington residents, we can't reliably get them into any shelter. So there are certain points in the year. I mean, when hypothermia closes down, then there's just way fewer beds already. And so, I mean, if we're trying to call DC and get someone into a shelter, it's almost impossible. So I do think shelter beds and just even very temporary housing is a big need as well.
Okay. I brought it up just because it bridges with other conversations we'll be having the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that. There is a position that the manager and I talked about that's, that would be related to the Community Criminal Justice Board, not to do the work, but to identify the buckets of work. And it's not in the budget, and I have not advocated with the manager or with colleagues because our budget is so tight. I think pretrial and the positions that you mentioned are higher priorities. But I would say, just for colleagues and for your, to pick up on your questions, and it's only a token, right? But go over and sit in their offices and listen to the stories, because that will identify, like, the judges have identified a problem of residency that is 40 to 60 people per year. And I have not worked on that problem for three months because I alone and, or A, haven't been able to. But I would just say, if you can go across the street and schedule 30 minutes at their convenience or 45, you will hear the stories and you'll get more familiar and you will know more. So it's not just me talking about this and Ally and Rachel trying to, you guys, sorry to use your first names, but you guys using the description, but it's real when you go across the street or when you go into the judges' courtrooms. And I've got one judge who's waiting, so I'll stop filibustering. But please, if you can make 45 minutes, go across the street in the next six months to a year, because I know you each and you will feel it. And Ms. Carpenter and Ms. Collins will help us understand it.
I think one thing that could help with pretrial release is for people to never go to jail in the first place. And so, I think having some procedures, like the Police Department having some procedures for these minor trespass charges, some other type of diversion plan of taking them to a shelter or whatever we can come up with, I think that would be very helpful, because we do have a number of clients who are held on trespass charges. And I know every judge in General District Court is wanting to release them, but we don't always have somewhere to release them to. Also, a big burden is the residency requirements for Arlington. And so, if we had options for people who don't meet the residency requirements other than during hypothermia, that would be helpful.
And Ms., that's a conversation where two by two could be helpful, because Ms. Friedman has talked about the two pieces that you just mentioned. I don't know that we can fix, but I just, if one of you wants to join, feel free to. I'm so glad you spoke.
Thank you. I think this is not the happiest note to conclude this conversation, but it's an important one. So thank you so much for the work that you're doing and the investment in this community and the investment in this office. Thank you. Thank you really very much.
Thank you all for your support. Clerk of court.
Yeah. Clerk of court.
You guys need a break?
We're good. We're going to crank.
No, we don't need a break. We're just out of money, though. I've heard that. I have my five things I worked on last week. Where do I turn that in?
Right here. Right here. You're in the right place.
You're going to skip that. Good. All right. Paul Ferguson, clerk of the Circuit Court for Arlington County and the City Falls Church. I'll try to make up a little bit of time for you here and go fast. I don't see my slides up on the screen. Yeah, there we go. Skip. Skip to the next slide, please. All right. We're relatively flat and stable as far as the key things we do. I know the manager and all of you would like to see our land records transactions going up and higher, but at least it's relatively stable. I don't see a change in that anytime soon, except for we may unfortunately have more properties on the market this year, so that could move things a little bit. I see interest rates staying pretty high. I see inflation continuing to go up and only get worse, and so, I don't see interest rates coming down. Criminal cases are slightly up. Civil cases are flat and probate is relatively flat. Next slide, please. All right. Well, we, we've always provided free access for case information, but one of our former deputies in the Arlington Clerk's Office is now the Fairfax Clerk, and that was the main issue he ran on was free, because they didn't have it. So people have asked me over and over again, well, when are you going to have it? I said, well, we've always had that. So if you need to have free online access, if you need information about your cases, you don't need any subscriptions or anything like that, you'll be able to find that. The biggest thing that we've been able to do is the land record system that was in the manager's budget and that you as a board funded, you can now get a copy of your deed online. You don't have to come into the office. And it costs a couple bucks, minimal cost recovery. So, anyway, that was a big improvement as far as customer service that the board is definitely responsible for. Next slide, please. We don't really have too many changes. If any of you want to talk about the Board of Zoning Appeals, that's something I'm glad to give back to the manager. If he wants to assign it to somebody else, there's a slight increase that you see for that. You know, there, other than that, we don't, our budget is relatively flat. It's only having to do with the regular cost of living increases that you might provide to other employees. Next slide, please. We're always looking for ways to bring in additional revenue. On your agenda, you're going to have the probate fee tax. That Loudon was the only one that had that in Northern Virginia. Maybe others will follow, so that's just a very slight extra fee that we're able to try to bring in for cost recovery for those going through the probate office. Next slide, please. Over the years, those of you that were kind enough to come and take a tour of the office, you've seen all the paper files that are still there. As we need space, we should scan in those files. We've done quite a bit of back scanning due to your generosity. Since 2013, we do not have any more paper files, so at least we're not creating paper files going forward. But at some point, if you ever had one-time money that you wanted to use for us to scan, we would welcome that. And I know that the board and the manager has been generous with that in the past for us. The main thing that I've talked to all of you about is the law library. I mentioned it last year. I knew that there was a tough budget last year. I'm told that the budget is tougher this year and maybe next year it will be even tougher. So, Mr. De Franti, you talked about a couple of priorities, and I was disappointed that the law library position wasn't on the top of your list. But even if it's not at the top of your list, if you can put it somewhere on your list of considerations, I would appreciate it. It's, we're a world-class community, and if you, I know all of you and I know all of you care about equity, and if the library is not open, it's very hard for not just self-represented people, but the public defenders are not here, their offices are across the street. Sometimes if they're in trial, they're going to need to use that space. You can ask any judges, I see Judge O'Brien here, if it's important to them that the law library is open. I only have one position that's allocated for that. And I've talked to most of you about that. What's different from the situation now than it was in the past is that the bar used to have multiple employees. They used to have two to three employees, so it was very easy to keep the law library open. Now, they have zero. So, the only employee is the one that you've allocated to me. If she is on vacation, calls out sick, we just have to put a sign up on the door that says the library is closed. And that's not, not what we're about in Arlington, I don't think. If I had that second position, my current law librarian does not speak Spanish. I would pledge to you that that person would be multilingual. I would also really up the services that we provide to self-represented litigants. I've been hesitant to do that because I don't want to come with criticism if someone comes for those services and the library is closed. I want to be able to guarantee that the law library is open. I want to be able to guarantee that the Law Library is open. If the manager wants to turn it over to Ms. Kresh and the library system, I think it would probably cost a little bit more to have things up to their standards. But I'd welcome getting that off my manager's plate.
You're so generous.
Yeah, I'm glad to share what I do, give everybody the opportunity to help. So that's the main thing. I've had a chance to talk to all of you individually about it. I know all of you would like to fund that position if you can, and I hope that you do it, because I'm not going to generate 100 emails from people that want this. I can tell you that people that work in the court system want it, and it's that person that really doesn't have the money for an attorney that's coming, that's doing their own case, that walks in there on a daily basis. Most of you have come by the library to see, there's at least a few people that come in every day. We don't get big numbers. The library gets a lot less use than your average public library, I'd say. But for those that need it, it's their only resource, and it's very important. Next slide. One thing I have to tell you, some of you asked me how much that was going to cost, and showing my outdated ability to estimate, I thought, well, the Law Library makes around $65, and I added another 20 for benefits. DMF corrected me on that. If it was to be funded at the same level as our current law librarian is, who she is not at the midpoint, I'm told, we're looking at $115,000. I do have that. DMF has run those numbers, so when you're doing your budget calculations and you want to tuck it in, it's now six figures rather than five. So I apologize for that. But it's about $115 that you would need to budget. Next slide. That's it. Any questions?
Any lights?
I have one.
Great.
And this is really the estimate, since this is not part of our library system. How do we, I mean, why do we score it so high? Maybe DMF can tell us.
Oh.
I mean, I'm all for stand-
DMF, in fairness to them, they offered to lower the number for me a little bit if I said I was going to hire at the entry, the lowest point, but I thought in fairness, I would use the number of the current person in there.
It's based on the current person in the Law Library.
But they do have to have some minimum qualifications to be a Law Librarian.
Well, I understand that, but previously there were, you know, the occasional employees of the bar, right? So it's not like there is a long-
That's a good point. They didn't-
There's a long history of that. We got one person who had excellent qualifications and well-paid for that, but that doesn't mean that it was always run like that.
Mr. Carrington, I welcome that, and I would welcome, if you were to provide an FTE for it not to be a Law Librarian, just something less, and I would hire something less. And still, I think I could train them up, because my main concern is their ability to help the public with navigating the legal system. So that's a great question. Thanks.
Mr. Spain.
Well, thank you. Paul, it's great to see you.
Nice to see you, Mr. Spain.
And I think about, when I'm in this moment, knowing you for all these years, that somewhat a couple decades ago, you sat on the side of the table, right?
It's a long time ago.
Long time ago. One thing I also don't really take too kind of is single points of failure. And to hear that, you know, and the service that can be provided, and that we should honestly be providing, in my opinion, and thank you for the tour, to know that we have to close up shop and put a sign on anything in Arlington, and also from an equity perspective, doesn't even sound fair, right? So, one, thanks for bringing that up. I think it's an asset that we really need to strongly consider, even if it's at somewhere of a lower level. I would love the opportunity to explore, you know, do we have perhaps librarians within our current cadre that could perhaps, in moments where people have a lead, that they can go in and kind of substitute? I know you have a college intern or someone, but can we use librarians already within county government?
I welcome that, Mr. Spain.
Well, good.
I've asked Ms. Kresh that before, and she said if she has anybody to loan me, she would. And we haven't seen anybody yet, but if she has extra staff and wants to send them over, that would help quite a bit.
Thank you. I just don't like closed or business signs in Arlington.
I don't like it either.
Thank you very much.
And I take the heat for it. I don't tell them it's a county issue.
Go on.
I will be so ready to support this next fiscal year.
Well, that's good direction to the manager. I have a feeling next year is gonna be tougher for you guys, but-
But I'm happy to prioritize it, and there's a risk, but we get to say all the time we're in favor of everything. And I am not a fiscal conservative, period, end of story. I'm fiscally restrained. This year, I can't point, and I'm not trying to upset you, you know this.
I'm not gonna upset you.
I can't point to another position, so I don't want to sound happy talk. And not because I don't believe in pro se, I just described Gideon Struppitt, but that's my 10 cents.
Great.
Thank you.
Just wrapping up pretty quickly, on the library, I assume we've done this conversation with Ms. Kresh before.
Yeah.
I think it's maybe part of the overall DES space utilization question, right? So we've got a space that's needed, could be opened more if we had staffing, it could be used a lot more if we got creative about how one accesses it. And so maybe when we get to our CIP check-in, we might think about, given the courthouse library is adjacent, is there any way to have some swing space over there that might-
Well, in defense of the manager, they have definitely tried to take over that space over the years.
Well, there you go. Good job.
Chief Judge has objected strenuously, and we've just sort of dropped it. So that's something that comes up all the time.
And it wouldn't be to fully take over, but-
Books, and couldn't we take some of the space for the county right now?
Yeah, but even the meeting space, you know, just to activate it a little bit more, and then also get you more volunteers on hand. You dangled zoning appeals, the Board of Zoning Appeals, just a little bit. Is there anything you want to share about that, or anything about rooting and keeping the board going?
Do you want me to talk about it? I could try to do it. No, I'm just seeing no's.
Okay.
I'd be glad to talk to you about it.
Separately. Let's take that as an action item, if you're seeing any challenges there.
I've seen some thumbs up. Everyone wanted to hear about it.
Perfect. Thank you for saving me from my colleague's abuse later. Appreciate it, and I think we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Scotty. Appreciate your interest in it.
We're good. So you get your excuse.
And actually, we have a new Board of Zoning Appeals member, Mr. Kamara, Alex Kamara, and his oath was at 5:30.
Oh, perfect timing.
The timing is excellent on this one. We'll get back to the office.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. District Court.
Hi. We'll jump right in. If you guys want to introduce yourselves, and thank you for your patience as we're trying to pick up a bit of time.
Sure. Well, I'm pretty sure we'll be fairly brief. Mr. Chair, board members, county manager, members of the public watching, thank you for hearing from Arlington General District Court and the Clerk's Office today. I'm Brian Hinchell, I'm the Clerk of Court for Arlington General District Court, and with me today is our Chief Judge, Judge Fran O'Brien. Also, our staff, you actually can go to the next slide, by the way. You can go on, yeah. Our staff consists of three judges, which is Chief Judge Fran O'Brien, Judge Jason Rucker, and Judge Carrie Steele. And our court administrator that works up in the chambers is Tarsha Fisher. You can go to the next slide. I'll make this fairly brief. Essentially, if you're not familiar, hopefully you never visit us that often from the other side of the bench, but we deal with criminal and traffic cases, civil cases. And then we also preside over involuntary mental commitment hearings. And then the Clerk's Office is basically there to process and maintain records for all criminal warrants, civil cases, and traffic summons as well. This includes the entry of record and of court proceedings, and also the financial record. Next slide. So, as highlighted last year, we continued building upon our success in our e-filing feature that's on the county's website. That was done using software and capabilities of the county's website, and it's a great partnership with DTS. We're continuing to find ways that we can continue to work with DTS, and, you know, we're actually getting ready to reach out to create a digital sign-in form for our court interpreters. This allows interpreters to meet with clients outside of the courtroom. A lot of times, we think of interpreters only helping during court thing, but they're on court processes, but we're actually finding this need where they need to meet with clients beforehand, and so we're trying to solve that issue. We're also continuing to develop innovative ways to make the General District Court more accessible and collaborate with our neighboring courthouse agencies. You can go to the next slide. I'll turn it over to Judge O'Brien, if she wants to talk anything about the Behavioral Health Docket, which continues to thrive.
Thank you. Is this on? Okay. Yes, our Behavioral Health Docket is now in its, I believe we're in our fourth year, fifth year, and we continue to service seriously mentally ill, duly diagnosed individuals. It's heavily supported and staffed by DHS. And when we started the docket, it was determined that it was going to be in-kind services. They didn't add anyone. Unfortunately, through the years, through the support of the Sheriff's Department, we were able to add a dedicated pretrial officer. There's been another, thanks to you folks, also another probation officer in our Community Corrections Unit. And the collaborative work of the program is, it's incredible and impressive, the care and concern that these folks put in. When somebody kind of goes AWOL, it's like the wagons are circled, and they go and find that person. And so it's been, I think we've had two graduations this year, and it's mental illness and unfortunately substance abuse, there's never a straight line into recovery. And to show the commitment of the folks in our program, we'll unfortunately have one person who we're probably going to have to terminate, but we've been working with them for two years. The idea initially was it was going to be one year. Some people are like fast learners, and they're out within the year, but generally speaking, it's a year plus. So we get to know everyone quite well. The graduations are really exciting times. We hope that somebody can come over, you folks can come over and witness it. We always get them a gift. DHS is amazing, something from an electric guitar to a TV for their new apartment. And that's another one of the highlights of the program, is when people get housed outside of the shelter. So it's a great program, and, you know, quite frankly, it's been one of the highlights of my career, so look forward to its continued success.
Other focuses continue. We, you know, last year, we started, initiated, including a page developed by Arlington County to aid in various languages whenever they're being sent unlawful detainers or evictions. This paperwork is included with them, hopefully to at least bridge those language barriers. We can go to the next slide. So basically, our budget summary pretty much does not, there's not a whole lot of changes. Our budget summary really doesn't present any new changes. The only slight increase that I would bring up is proposed budgets due to incrementally increases to our employee salaries. And as the county is always generously, which I will once again graciously thank the county for the supplement, is provided as you continue, it's just the 15% that continues. As our state salaries have gone up, that's the increase that you're seeing. So it's not us requesting or increasing, it's just the annual increase that happens by COLAS. So that's, you can go to the next slide. Okay. So just as a reminder, Clerk's Office, unfortunately, we cannot make any guarantees on any anticipated revenues. Our primary focus is providing access to justice to all residents and citizens interacting with the court system. I'd like to continually say that we appreciate the support of the employee supplements for the GDC clerk employees. Consequently, our turnover rate is significantly lower than my colleagues from around the state, and on behalf of the staff, we are continually extremely thankful for your all support. Furthermore, in general, we continue to support the renovations. I know that the courthouse, the investment in the courthouse renovations, you know, the only challenge we have is we are running into the age of some of our systems furniture, but we are content we can make it last until they get to our floor, basically. And that's what the goal and the hope is. So I believe we'll be able to continue to be patient.
Is your duct tape budget holding up? Or we need to-
Always, essential. Sometimes we get that supplied by the state, so that helps. No, wrong is very clear. It's not too often, I mean, actually, you'll find a lot of times, we will, I'll bring my own hand truck in and move files around everywhere. But I'll be happy to answer any other questions, or if you have any questions for Judge O'Brien.
Well, great. Before we go to questions, speaking to that extremely low turnover rate, I understand that we have a retirement coming.
We do have a retirement coming.
Yes, I am. Hanging it up. It'll be the end of my second six-year term, so it seemed like a nice drop-off point. So happy to hand it off to good hands, and a great team that's in place, so I'm really proud of our bench.
Thank you for your service, and glad that you've been able to spend it with us. Okay, Mr. DeFrana.
Just a variation on that. I'm glad you mentioned how much you treasured the Mental Health Docket. And I don't, I mean, I've spent, I've been to one or two graduations, but those days, I don't think I'll ever forget, and just a huge thank you for, because it wasn't easy at the start, and, you know, I was just sort of vaguely conceptual, and you were doing the work along with the others. And just a huge thank you. And part of that thank you is also having the foresight, or whether it was automatic, that you would turn it over to Judge Rucker so that it is in good hands as you, I'm mindful that we are all temporary, and so the institution that you've created here is just a huge credit, and I'm super grateful.
Here, here.
Ms. McCafee.
Thank you. I think it is such a testament to our community that we were able to put together a Behavioral Health Docket. I'm wondering if you, you know, know how many other localities in Virginia have one or have even tried to pursue one? I assume we're fairly unique in-
Well, I can't give you a number.
Yeah.
But I can tell you that I was going through some notes the other day for something, and we had representatives from Alexandria, Spotsylvania, I want to say, I think two jurisdictions who came to observe our docket, because they were in the process. I had a judge from Washington County. One of my colleagues introduced me to him, because he was trying to start a docket down there, so I sent him a lot of our materials. Judge Jackie Taleby in Roanoke-Salem started the first before the OES, you know, created the docketing procedures. She had sort of her ad hoc docket, and that's been, that's probably been 15 years ago. So I'd say, in the Tidewater area, there's a few jurisdictions. The Roanoke-Salem, I know Charlotte, Loudon preceded us, Fairfax has one, Prince William is trying to get one off the ground. So all of our local jurisdictions here in this area do, and I know I'm missing some, but it's definitely something that, because of the, you know, as you've heard from everyone else who's been here, is involved in the criminal justice side, mental illness is a huge driver of our population.
No, absolutely. And a perhaps less of a budget-adjacent question, but it just occurs to me that we may want to add this to our legislative package to ask for some state support to offset the costs of doing this, because I think it's a benefit to everyone, and as more localities add it, I think there's folks who would be willing to add it, you know, if they got some financial support to do it.
Yeah. You make a great point, because, this is recorded, I always like to talk about, I'll say it anyway, the unfunded mandates that come out, and you, there are changes that are made at the state level, which don't take into account the lack of resources that other jurisdictions may or may not have. When court costs could be converted- When court costs could be converted to community service, that was like a great thing, unless you don't have a community service agency in your area. And one of the recent, sort of, one of the governing, I call it, groups, it's now called All Rise, they, sort of, national group that they deal with guidelines for specialty dockets, whether it be the recovery court, behavioral health, any of those. And the state under OES adopted their guidelines, which require whether someone who's in a specialty docket has substance abuse issues, because sometimes in recovery court, not in recovery court, but in our court sometimes, you know, people, they had it, but then they're done, you know, because it was just a blip. They're required three times a week to have urinalysis. And I had my colleague, Judge Talevy from down in Roanoke, she said, well, how, I mean, how is that paid for? And I said, well, we get the money and we do the tests. And she says, well, in our jurisdiction, the participants have to pay for each of those drug tests. So just imagine the financial burden that that puts. And this is now part of the guidelines which have to be put in place. So it would be great and maybe that could start the conversation if you did something like that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Spain.
No questions. First time here and I just want to thank you, Chief Judge, for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll have a question.
Ah, I think I'm done, so.
Super quick. Last year, we talked about an additional Behavioral Health Docket position, and this budget is not a place where that's easy, but it is probably, you could make a financial cost for it. And I'm just wondering, you were very thoughtful about how you answered last year for additional staff positions to support Behavioral Health Docket. You are close to retirement now, is your chance, if you think we need another position, but we may not be able to afford it. I'm not promising that. Please share it, because if, maybe we can't do it this year, but I just want an update because we were right at that 13 or 14, if I remember, who were in the program. And I couldn't justify it to myself under the circumstances last year, but I wonder if you have a thought on that.
Well, it hasn't changed. The, I mean, there are a lot of people that have been recommended and evaluated who really don't fit the program. By the same token, we've had a couple of people that we've put on wait lists. And in one instance, we were able to get that individual into the ARC program for inpatient drug treatment. While that happened, somebody graduated, so it worked out well. But yeah, I mean, with the, and I hope I gave in very short order, an idea of the intensity of the work that's done by the people who are on our treatment team and supervision team. You know, it's just there, and then plus the folks from DHS, they do have other duties outside of the dockets. So yeah, I mean, more bodies means more people. And that should be our goal and it's obviously aspirational, but you know, that's the short answer. Maybe the long answer, I don't know.
And I'll wrap us up in the vein of it's your, it's your last one of these exciting constitutional work sessions that I know you look forward to every year. Is there anything else you want to share with us about the E-ticket program, about building use and space, about other topics I don't know to ask about?
Well, you know, I give Brian all the credit on, you know, both the, on the E-ticket, on the work that he does on keeping our website, you know, up to date, because access to justice is obviously a very important aspect of the need in the community. And if people can't go to the resources and get the information they need in an understandable fashion, then we're not serving the community. But outside of that, dovetailing on the previous, well, two prior, Public Defender, housing space is just so critical. Because I'm one of those judges who sits there and says, you know, why am I just going to release this person on the wing and the prayer that they're going to go to X, Y, and Z program in DC, which is, you know, K Street or whatever the other program is? Because it hasn't worked in the past. And the reason I know it hasn't worked in the past is because they're on bond out in this jurisdiction, they're here, and then they're over here. So it's, it puts the court in a very difficult position. Now, obviously, if they're not Arlington residents, that makes it even more complicated. But we do put a lot of, it's not intentional, but we do put the onus on the defense to come up with a plan. And I was just saying to Ally Carpenter before she left, I think that if we had more bond diversion people, if we had more folks on the, on the pretrial staff who were actually trained in that area, that would be sort of the collaborative unit to try and take some of that burden off of the Public Defender's Office. Because everybody wants the same thing. They don't want someone to sit unnecessarily, but by the same token, they don't want them to go out and do the same thing and come right back in again. And so, and then the bed space in Arlington, that has been a huge issue anecdotally. I think what's happening is the police are very mindful, CIT-trained, they want to do the right thing, but if there's no place for someone to go? And the post office down in Clarendon, perfect example of one that I had where I'm saying, why was this man arrested? Because he wouldn't leave because he had nowhere else to go. And, you know, obviously, again, it's resources and how we use them and how we allocate them.
Very helpful. And I think we'll be back next on the 11th, right? We'll be talking about DHS. I do think we have, I hope, in that budget expansion, there are some extra beds in the shelters, but we'll be talking about it. It's really helpful to hear from all of you that that's the critical piece.
The only thing I just want to kind of add, which is, aside from that, we're going a little off script, but it's not really budget-related. One of the things I heard when Public Defender's Office was presenting, you asked about, well, how do you all take care of yourselves? And one of the things that it quickly made me think of is, I have some contacts as I've gotten involved in different professional organizations to possibly bring in some training for us, for everyone in either law, and it would really be anyone in the courthouse within, you know, that works within the public safety field. We do go through a thing, it's, there's actually a name for it, it's called compassion fatigue. And I think judges go through this. I think, you know, I can tell you clerks, we go through this. Regardless if we're there to keep the record, we hear everybody's story too, at the front counter, on the phone, every day, throughout the whole day. And it can, it can really lead to burnout. Defenders are the same way, circuit court clerks are the same way, sheriff's office, police department, it all. And so what I was going to say is like, I actually will kind of spearhead this and get my colleagues throughout and see if we can possibly put together, you know, at least a couple of training opportunities to how do you combat that? And so like, I heard that need and I was like, I'm not saying we are coming to you for any kind of budgeting, you know, for that, it's not really, but I did hear that need being presented, I think we can probably do something towards that effect.
I think that's great and I might at least offer as informal resource, you know, we've done a lot of work on the public safety side and the sheriff's side to invest there, so we've got some practitioners that might be able to walk across the courtyard and at least weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bring on to Ms. McCafee and the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court.
We'll invite them to the table.
Our final presentation.
And while we get your slides up, if you all just want to introduce yourselves quickly for...
So I'm Earl Conklin, I'm the Director of Court Services. They say it takes a village to raise a child, we brought the whole village. So first, let me introduce Judge Rob, Robin Robb, she's our Chief Judge of Juvenile Court. Judge William Michael Chick, Mike Chick, is our other judge in our juvenile court. We also have our brand-new, relatively brand-new Clerk of Court for Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court, Teresa Lara. Teresa was a chief, was a deputy clerk, chief deputy clerk, and judges admin for the last 12 or 13 years, so she's well experienced in that position, we're really glad to have her. Also, we have Rick Stroback, who's our Deputy Director for JDR. Yvette Zaragoza, who is our Quality Assurance Person, and all of our data, which we are so grateful for, is her work. Last year, you approved a position for our Rise Mentoring Coordinator. Alex Gavin is that person. We're so happy to have her here, and if you have any questions about where Rise is, we're happy to answer it. And then skipping to the woman in blue, that's Alex Espinoza Smith, she is the one that brings our budget to life with actually spending the money and making sure it goes where it's supposed to. So I'm going to, I think both our judges wanted to make some comments to begin with, and including the mystery person who I did not introduce.
And I'm not sure if this is the microphone on.
I bring it a little closer, they're not, they're not as sensitive as you think.
All right. I'd like to recognize Timothy Kaufman, who is a probation officer with our court. He's been there for 40 years. And he is retiring this month, unfortunately for us, and if I could replicate him and have 25 of him, I would do so. He has really set the gold standard for probation counselors, for juvenile probation counselors. He was a founding member of the Young Achievers Program, which you have all supported over the years and we're so grateful for that. He also was an early supporter of Rise Mentoring. And really, the juvenile court's philosophy, certainly for the young people, is I am, I can, I will, I do. So for the youth, we want them to be able to say, I am enough, I can do hard things, I will advocate for myself, and I do believe that my past doesn't define me. And so that's a lot of what Mr. Kaufman does, and he finds ways to have the children be successful, as do the rest of our probation counselors and so forth. So we're very grateful for him, we're grateful for the support that you have all continued to show us for our programs, and we're so grateful. And we're grateful for you, Mr. Kaufman.
Let me just add too, so I don't want to say too much because Judge Rob already said it all very well. There we go. Judge Rob already said it all very well, but I do think it's important to say that when Tim started doing this work, I didn't even know my ABCs. So that's how long he's been, he's been serving kids and families, and he wears so many different hats in doing it. I mean, he's a probation officer, that is a very, I think sometimes that's got a negative connotation to it, when you're the person placed on, you know, probation, but, you know, our probation officers believe that their job is to be a resource, number one, and that their job is to help the kids that they work with to be successful. And he, Tim, wears so many different hats when he does that job. He's a probation officer, he's a counselor, he's a teacher, he's, he's an advocate and so many other things. So it's really a huge loss for the court, but I think it's important for us to recognize him for that, that 40 years, so I'll just add that.
Okay, I think we will launch in our presentation. We have an hour, just kidding. I know you're tired. Okay, so the juvenile court, overall, you know, safety is a big, is really one of our primary missions, it's the thing that we are most committed to, not just safety in the community, you hear that often, but we're committed to safety within families. Many of the clients we see, there has been violence in their homes, certainly, and so we're concerned about that. You know, juvenile court, we're not first responders when it comes to safety, but we often, I often tell my staff, we're second responders. We're the ones where traumas happened, concerns have happened in the home, we're the ones that get involved for the long haul. And I think that's important to recognize in terms of community safety. Diversion, you know, we want to prevent kids from entering the court system and we want them, we want to prevent them from penetrating more deeply if they do enter. Those are really our two goals. And we do that through evidence-based services and programs. That's the best way. Helping kids grow, helping families become more safe and secure is the best way for us to accomplish community safety. You can see three of the people that are here in the room there. Our budget covers judges' chambers, supplies, training, and we are undergoing courthouse renovations currently. Our juvenile court is on the 12th, on the 11th floor. We hope soon, maybe by the summer, to be moved back to the fourth floor and resume operations there. Our Clerk of Court has six deputy clerks. We are, and I know Teresa and her staff are so grateful for the supplement that the county provides to fund those positions. Our court service unit is really divided into two operations. There's the CSU and then there's our community programs. Within our community, within our court service unit, we have our early diversion services, which is where we provide services to kids who have not yet come in contact with the system, but they've been identified. This includes girls outreach, includes our gang prevention efforts, there are risk factors present, it includes Rise Mentoring Program. It's really designed to keep kids from encountering the justice system. We don't put their names in our database, we don't enter them in the state system, we do everything we can to avoid creating anything that would lead to more penetration into the system. And then we have court intake, which is where every court case gets created for juveniles and for domestic relations matters. They're the ones that initiate the paperwork with the petitioners, the law enforcement, parents, others who, child welfare schools, anyone seeking to get assistance from the court comes to court intake. And that's where, they have the authority to divert cases from the system. And so we're, we're pretty aggressive about making sure that where we can divert youth from the system, we attempt to do so. And then probation and parole are the, is the service that provides, when the judge orders a youth to be under the supervision and support of a probation counselor, those are the staff that provide that function. Our detention diversion electronic monitoring program, we don't want, we are committed to not having a youth in detention a day longer than they need to be, or not in detention at all, if we can, if we can assist with that. And that's really what our detention diversion and electronic monitoring program provides. You don't often hear about the adult probation services in our CSU, but they're extensive. It's largely for family and household members who have been charged with domestic violence. That is by and large the types of cases that we see. And then our last service within the CSU is our counseling and psychological services. We have two, two positions within the CSU and then one in our program, a group home and one at the Aurora House group home. And it really is to provide some behavioral health services to youth and families, as well as to provide the court with psychological evaluations. I think most of you know these programs pretty well. Our two group homes are critical to our operations. When kids are in crisis, sometimes they need a place to stay, and Argus and Aurora certainly provide that. Our after-school programs are essential. We don't want to remove youth from their home, we do everything we can to keep them in their home, if they can stay there, and that's what those programs allow, is intensive, every day after school, programming to kids and families, and avoids them having to leave home but getting a high level of service. And our Safe Havens program is our supervised visitation and exchange, which really serves domestic violence offenders who cannot have safe contact with each other or cannot need supervision and having visitation with their children. Rise is our mentoring program. We've, with our new mentoring coordinator, we're not only increasing the number of kids that can be served, but the intensity of that program is going from one or two contacts a month to four contacts a month with those kids at a minimum. So we're really excited about the intensity of that, as well as the number of kids. And then our gang prevention is, again, mostly for youth that are not court-involved, schools identify these kids, we do prevention groups, do education services, all of that. So the message that you'll get, like you've heard from some of our other court partners, is everything's increasing. The numbers of cases, the numbers of clients, the numbers of petitions filed are all increasing at a significant rate. So you can see from this, there's an increase of about 40% of just the... So you can see from this, there's an increase of about 40% of just the types of petitions that come to the front door of the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court. These are all types of petitions, the civil petitions such as child support, custody, visitation, child welfare, criminal petitions, which are status offenders, school truancy petitions, of all types. You can see they've gone up by 40% in two years, from FY '22 to FY '24. So that's a huge jump. And then the court cases, this is really the judges and the court system's workload, these are actually court cases, and what's happening with the number of new cases that come into the court, and that's gone up by 28% in that same period of time. The difference is, intake sometimes diverts cases or other things, so not every case becomes a court case. I want to highlight just a couple of other trends that I think are alarming. I think you'll find them the same, about what's happening with our juvenile population. It's becoming, increasing petitions. We've had a 15% increase in juvenile petitions from fiscal year '23 to '24. We've had 135% increase in the number of felony offenses that kids are charged with. That's a huge increase. That's in one year. 135% increase in the number of felony offenses. Weapons-related offenses from fiscal year '24 to this year so far, in fiscal year '25, have gone up by 58%. Number of times a kid is charged, a youth is charged with something related to a weapon. And then it's getting younger. Our number of middle school kids have increased by 92% from last year to this year, year-to-date. So it's getting, it used to be, currently, the 12 and 13, we're talking middle school, we're talking 12 and 13-year-olds. It's now occupying 20% of the cases we have, our 12- and 13-year-old kids. So all of that is to say, we're getting more kids, it's getting more serious, it's involving weapons more often, and they're getting younger. So that's the news around trends that we're seeing in juvenile court. In terms of equity, our court is committed to equity. We have a racial and ethnic disparity team that is across agency. Every agency that is child-serving is at the table and involved in the court case for that youth. Prosecutor, defense, police, child welfare, behavioral health, schools, judges, and court services are at the table, trying to address these. The reason we have data that I can share with you now is because this team met and took on that task of expanding our data. Equity for us means looking at the decision points involved in a youth or adult in juvenile court. So at intake, what happens? Decisions around detention, what happens? Decisions around prosecution of the case, what happens? Dispositions, probation, not probation? Commitment to the state? At every point of that, every decision point in our system, we can tell you, race, ethnicity, where they live, their gender, and what their offense was. And we can do comparisons to see whether or not our system is behaving in an equitable way. I've put one data for one such decision point. That's diversion. Critical. Who gets an opportunity for diversion? How is that dispensed? So you can see that in FY '24, 93% of the youth that were given the opportunity for diversion were kids of color. Kids that come in our front doorstep, you know, that come into juvenile court, 86% of the kids that come in and encounter the justice system at intake are kids of color. 93% are getting the opportunity for diversion. So I think we're hitting the mark in terms of just making sure that diversion is available in an equitable way to whoever comes into juvenile court. So we can tell that kind of, our court can explain that in every decision point we have. So in terms of numbers, you can see at intake, 473 unduplicated youth were involved at intake. 272 unduplicated youth encountered juvenile probation, and 390 adults, unduplicated, were involved in our domestic relations supervision. So if you combine intake, there can be duplication between intake and probation, because the youth comes to intake, and then if they get put on probation. So unduplicated, just all types, youth involved with our court. In FY '24, there were 484 kids involved in juvenile court. So number of intake cases, up by 14%. That's what that equals. Number of youth served by probation, up 11% in one year. And then number of adults served is also up by 8%. So in terms of how we're doing, that's really what this slide talks about. Our success rate for diversion cases is 78%. For juvenile probation cases, about 70%, 69. Our adult, also about 70%. So overall, we're in the, like, a little over 70% success rate for the levels of supervision. You know, I was asking, we're all asking the question, why our success rate for juveniles went down from 82 to 69? Case loads are up, seriousness of crime is up, complication of fentanyl, other issues is up, was up. And so those are all factors, I think, of what we're seeing. We're seeing kids with more challenges, families that are, have more obstacles to be in success. Also, that includes out-of-jurisdiction kids. Not every youth that we count there is getting supervised by us. If they are a DC or Maryland resident, or Fairfax resident, those cases get transferred to them for supervision. So as an example, about 50% of the youth from DC that we transfer there for supervision of their probation are unsuccessful, 50% are successful. So that affects our numbers as well. In terms of just our budget summary, things have gone up. The manager's included a recommendation for some pay compression. That's addressing the pay compression in probation intake positions. It is a significant problem, affecting morale, affecting retention, other issues like that. We've got some money to help us do a better job of collecting data for certain of our functions. And then the Aurora House costs have gone up. That's often a swing in the budget in how it works there. But those are all salary and utilization-based calculations. And then there's some additional revenue that's coming in for court services. I always like to include a slide about our detention numbers, just so you can see, it's not in our budget, but it's an important number. You can see they've trended upward. Year-to-date, for '25, it's down a little bit from last year in terms of the average daily rate so far. I would just simply add the caveat that spring is a busy time for juvenile court, so those numbers may go up a little bit when spring comes. The Detention Commission, their budget is really focused on facility improvements, continuing the pilot for the behavioral health, trying to recruit, hire, and retain, train staff. That's a big challenge. And then their cost is in the regional cost center. So the thing I'll highlight here is, again, I'm telling you, everything is going up, but I think I've done a pretty good job of conveying that. But Safe Havens, it's a program, as I described, that serves domestic violence offenders and around child visitation and child exchange. The grant for that is very uncertain. It's funded by the Office on Violence Against Women and the Department of Justice. So we're concerned about that. We submitted an application. Unless something changes in terms of the availability of that funding stream, decision is sometime in September of '25. With that, I or the judges will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. The work you do is so important and impactful, and it, you know, we only get somewhat of a window into what you're doing. I work a little bit with Mr. Stroback on Project Peace, and so I get a little bit more of a window sometimes. But colleagues, I will pass it along first, Mr. DeFranti.
I'm ready, but don't need to go first. I do, I'm trying to remember when we last discussed Safe Havens. It could have been last year. I think it was two years ago.
It was last year?
Last year. So we need the number on that. If the grant, if this administration does not fund it, we need to know the number before we make any one-time or ongoing decisions. So I don't know if that qualifies as the question to the DMF team, or, but we've just got to have that number before we make decisions on the $11 million or whatever we're doing. And then Argus House seems also to have an increase in clients, but it didn't have the budget increase that I saw in one of the slides. And I'm wondering if you, if there's a need there that's acute or not, just because of the increase in the number of clients?
I think the current budget request is sufficient for Argus House.
Got it. Guess just a huge thank you for your continued leadership and work. And I don't know if this is a question that others will have, but I don't have a handle on what we need to do to address the clarity with which you conveyed the seriousness of the challenge with respect to younger, more violent, larger numbers. And keep in mind, we can't fix everything, but we, you know, our community tries to try. And so do you have any thoughts, you know, not meaning-of-life thoughts, given that two or three of us have a 6 o'clock meeting? But, you know, do you have any succinct thoughts that might be of help to not just me, but the board as a whole?
I think we're trying to work, sorry, trying to work very hard with our other stakeholders, like the Department of Human Services and the school system. I think it would be critical for everybody to be focusing on elementary school children and not waiting till they get to middle school, to identify those that are struggling, and where there may be gaps in services that result in children making decisions that aren't to their benefit. But, you know, it's a continual conversation. I don't know that I have an answer to it, but it's something that we've been discussing.
Yeah, I mean, I think I definitely agree with what Judge Rob says. I do think also probably some more, if we were putting a little bit more focus on maybe services, I'm not saying necessarily from the court, but whatever services there are for middle-school-age kids too, just because we are seeing a lot of that. And that's already kind of a tough time for kids, and now it's just much, much more complicated with phones and social media and all kinds of other stuff. So, and that's one of the reasons why we're trying to work a little bit more closely with the schools as much as we can, to try to figure out how we can communicate better.
I would add to that, the county has taken some really big steps in addressing the needs of kids, and I don't think we've had a chance to see the results of those yet. I mean, I know Parks and Rec, I know DHS, the therapists at the schools, things that, you know, juvenile court is getting, but also, you know, everything you've been working on for the last two years is now coming to fruition, and we needed a little time to see, does it make a difference? So I think that's also a consideration.
Well, we've seen a dramatic difference in deaths and, you know, the absence of, right? So that is an early indicator, very pleasant for me in this case.
But you made the point I was thinking, which is, manager's excellence award was to some of the progress made on some of the fentanyl, and we have, it's two painful deaths over a year ago, but there are some, I just think it's important to keep hope in mind, because, you know, it's not easy when you see it, and yet I'm sure you both have, or you've seen adults that are kids that you have helped, and that's enough hope to keep you going. So I just think, that's the only thought, so I align, and I'll stop talking.
And just certainly adding in, the school substance abuse counselors to some of the schools has been tremendous. And having actual therapy-based counselors in the school is also a very wonderful gift, and we're appreciative of all of the county board's efforts in that regard, too.
Our boards did some good things.
No, you do wonderful things.
Mr. Karen Tonas.
Thank you. No question about that. And I have to say, there is also the raw impact of the information that you can actually die if you swallow a tiny amount of that. This is intimidating enough for a lot of people. So the problem I see is that, and what you said about the increase in felonies, in minors who are charged with a felony, and they end up in juvenile detention, and we have this, in my opinion, quite dramatic increase of our average, you know, detention there. So what I, I don't know what needs to be done differently dealing with somebody who, obviously a juvenile, who has access to guns, is probably entangled in some sort of, you know, organized criminal activity, or, you know, widely spread criminal activity, I don't know how else to characterize that. So where is, what are the resources that we are, we need to shift to address this I mean, obviously, the money that we spend in information, education, mental health support, counseling, et cetera, is paid off, no question about that. Public money saves lives. But now we have the situation that we have this aftermath of criminal activity that is, you know, deeply embedded now in some strata of our juvenile population.
Well, expanding prevention efforts and early intervention, identifying kids in the school setting, identifying kids in the community, giving parents a resource to go when they see concerning behavior, I think all of those things would help. The court itself, you know, is kind of after the fact, when, you know, it's reactive.
Yeah, you're the second.
I mean, it's like, yeah, it's like, you know, something's happened, and someone comes to court, a parent. I will tell you that anecdotally, I don't have data for this, but it's very obvious in juvenile court, the incidence of fentanyl use among our kids is way down. The incidence of parents coming in desperate, last year we were talking about how desperate parents were. We aren't seeing the same level of parents coming to juvenile court seeking help for fentanyl issues because their youth is chronically using, and they, kids are still using substances, which is a problem, but it's not fentanyl, which, you know, so not to the extent that it was. Judges, would you agree with that assessment? I want to make sure I'm on solid ground here. But that's what we see in our violations, the placements in detention. Our detention use was being driven by that. Everybody was alarmed and concerned about the safety of this youth, and so they were being placed in detention. We're not seeing that as the driver for detention, the way it once was. So I think that's the, that's the good news in this story.
I think one other thing, too, that's just, this isn't a solution or an answer to your question at all, but I think this is one other thing for everybody to, for all of us to be aware of, too. It's extra hard, because when we got kids at these young ages that are getting charged with these serious felonies, we have the safety issue, the community safety issue, which is a big deal. But then there's also the thing that's very difficult, I think, for the court, is, I think it's important for everybody to know that if a kid, okay, whether you're 13, whether you're 15, 17, whatever it is, if a kid ends up adjudicated with a felony, they are forever a convicted felon. And that's like also something kind of in the puzzle, when we're trying to figure out, what's the best way to figure out how to serve this kid, and how to help find the right balance between accountability and grace for kids that are much younger but have done really, really serious things? That's a tricky space, and we're, quite honestly, I don't speak for Judge Rob, I think maybe I do, but I struggle with a lot to figure out how to handle those things. But it's just something that I think's important to think about.
Thank you. I will highlight, we have six minutes until Mr. DeFranti has a meeting across the street. So I'll move to Ms. Cunningham.
Yeah, we could carry on the conversation after. I just wanted to flag kind of our youth strategic planning efforts, and you called out some of the efforts in other departments. Last year, we talked about the great programs you've had, and thank you for the Last year, we talked about the great programs you've had, and thank you for the tour. If we could find more space, we talked last year about your at-capacity, can you say a little bit more about what space, could it be in schools, could it, does it need to be adjacent to existing? And then we can have a much longer conversation later.
The space we're talking about, I think, is our Young Achievers Program, which we have crammed into Argus House in, you know, an inadequate space. If we could move that program, we could increase the capacity with existing staffing by 50%. Right now, they're capped at eight. If we could move it to larger space, we could serve 12 kids at a time. So I think that's a significant request that, you know, I know where, community center, school, I mean, I think we could work out most places, recognizing that we would be congregating kids with court, you know, records at whatever location that is. We sometimes have a concern about congregating kids from multiple schools at a particular site, and these are kids that have committed delinquencies and are more moderate and high-risk offenders that are served by that program.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Spain?
Great to see you again, Earl. And to the judges, great to see you as well. This may require a longer conversation down the road, but, you know, facility improvements and renovation, Earl, we're specifically at the detention facility. I've been there. Your smile, it's not the best of conditions, right? What's your thoughts on where you think we need to go with that? How's the conversation going with the commission? And to the judges, I mean, I think a question I want to hear is like, what is your number one priority for this fiscal year? There is, just if there was one, what is that number one priority? You're smiling. I know it's always going to be more than one.
What if I answer the detention question first?
Do that, but then, yeah, I'm trying to sum this up, given that Mike has, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
The detention has reserves that can be dedicated to doing much of that renovation, whether it's sufficient or not. I think it's going to depend on the designs that they end up with, but it is due for some, some serious renovations. I think at some point, there will be a capital improvement plan coming forward from the commission that will be hopefully incorporated into each jurisdiction's capital improvement plan.
Sure.
So I think that's where the commission wants to go with the renovations.
Mm-hmm.
And then in terms of priorities, I'll let you guys answer that question.
Go ahead.
I'll go first.
Sure.
I mean, I'm thinking about this just off the top of my head, so I think if I had more time to think about it, maybe I'd have a different answer. But I think for me, a priority would be, and for our court, for every kid who has been charged with a felony, a serious felony, and who has been given an opportunity to have that felony reduced down to a misdemeanor or to be dismissed, so that they don't end up a convicted felon for the rest of their life. My priority would be for every one of those kids who's been put in that position to be able to be successful in that.
Thank you.
I'd have to say mental health. Mental health is, is part of every single makeup of all of our cases. It truly is. And I know, I'm looking forward to when Virginia Hospital Center opens their beds and so forth, because a lot of time probation officers and so forth are scrambling to find placements for children that have to be in residential just by virtue of the significant need. And when there's no programs, then we're just putting a Band-Aid on the child getting the services. And where you might get them to have some outpatient when they really need residential, we're doing them a disfavor. And so I would say mental health. And ultimately, I would love to, to also have a behavioral health docket for juveniles in our court, but right now, it's a little complicated with our dockets and only two judges.
Two great priorities, especially with the felony piece, which is, once a person gets a felony on their, I've known so many young folks who lives the trajectory even at they get past a certain age because they have a felony. It's just, makes it challenging for them to ever get anything good going on in life, job opportunities, whatever. But thank you for your time. Back over to you, Ms. Coffey.
Thank you. I would echo concerns about the Safe Haven Grant. I think we did talk about that last year because it wasn't certain that it was going to be awarded, and my understanding is that we are not receiving the grant for this cycle. So I think, and we committed to covering that regardless. I think, I hope that we would do that again. You know, we heard from our adult courts-involved folks that many of their clients are not Arlington County residents. Do you have a general sense of what proportion of the kids that you see in court are Arlington residents versus our neighboring jurisdictions?
70% of the kids that we work with in juvenile court intake are Arlington residents.
Thank you.
So the majority. I heard someone, I can't remember if it was the Commonwealth saying 30, 70, it was the opposite. For us, it's 70% of the kids in juvenile court are Arlington residents.
That's great. And then I was wondering if you wanted to say anything about some of our non-JDR but supportive services in terms of our caseworkers on child welfare, but I also know that the CASA program is being rolled into Northern Virginia Family Services this year, which I think is going to be a really big change in terms of, you know, it's been a separate, standalone program, and BFS is wonderful, but they do a lot of different things. And just how do you think those kind of wraparound supports that are so important for JDR are working, not working? Is there, you know, things that we should be aware of that can help you all?
I think they're amazing. I think they're also probably very similarly to our court services unit. I don't know if there's a better way to say, overworked, but they're really busy. And I think we rely on them a lot, and there are often times where we might reach out to them to just, hey, get a sense about their perspective on something that may not, it's not a child welfare case, it's not, but they've had some kind of connection to the family, and it gives a little bit of perspective that really helps us. So they're a really important partner with us in a lot of different ways. And I think, actually, as I'm thinking more about priorities, too, on that, from our perspective, we're, we've really been trying to figure out ways to get more guardians alightum, attorneys, who can serve as guardians alightum for kids, to help all those social workers and the families and CSU and the kids. It's, they're a big help, to have good ones, and I think there's a little bit of a shortage generally.
My understanding, yeah.
Everywhere.
CASA's invaluable to us. I don't know.
You're off. There you go.
I don't, I don't know that we've seen any differences because of how they folded into the other group yet. It might be too soon for us to know that. The social workers are very, very busy. I think that what we have done by allowing them to appear remotely on the child welfare cases has helped out a lot, because it's one thing when you come to the court and have to sit there for an hour, two hours, and so forth. When you're remote, you have the opportunity while you're waiting for the court to call the case, to be able to multitask and do other things. So I think we're one of the few jurisdictions that allows remote presence, not only for social workers, but for other folks that really need the opportunity to be able to access the court, but they can't necessarily.
I'll simply add that we'd be lost without Child and Family Services and their behavioral health work. We partner on child welfare cases all the time for kids that are crossing over from juvenile court to child welfare. Adult, our adult caseloads are heavily reliant on the behavioral health services of the CSB, of DHS. Partnership is a wonderful program that serves adult offenders. So many of our cases are connected to those services, and we value those partnerships greatly.
Yeah, thank you.
As Judge Rob mentioned, the school therapist, school-based therapists, there's lots of ways. We are intertwined with DHS and other, other of our supportive agencies.
Yeah, thank you. And then, I don't know, I think we've kind of covered this, but in terms of the kids that you are seeing with additional severity, younger kids, is there any trends in terms of like risk factors that are coming out that weren't previously part of the profile of kids you are seeing? Is it new things, or is it just more of the same risk factors and more extreme?
I don't know. I'm not sure. I think I'd have to dig in a little bit to the, so, I'm sorry, Judge, go ahead.
No, I think, I think we lost a lot of ground and a lot of children during COVID when the school system was shut down, because there were a lot of children that, that isolation and so forth didn't do them any favors, and there weren't the school personnel to intercede on Abuse and Neglect or mental health services. So the kids were left, their knees were left unattended.
Kids fell behind in school, then they stopped going to school, and that kind of continued.
Right. So I, I think we're seeing the results of what happened during COVID.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I think we would need more data to figure out more of what your, to answer your question properly, but.
Absolutely.
We do an assessment called the Youth Assessment and Screening Inventory on every youth that gets put on probation. It assesses youth over nine different domains, life domains. I can't tell you, but it's a wonderful question to look at those 12- and 13-year-olds and see where their risk factors are showing up. I don't think we've done that analysis, but we could do that. That's a wonderful question.
I would be happy to connect later on.
It's a wonderful question to see.
Yeah, thank you. All right. And with that, I'll hand it back to our illustrious chair.
With thanking everybody, this, there is no objection, this concludes the working session. Thank you, everybody, for taking the time, putting in the effort and the work. Thank you so much for your service, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir, again, for your service.
Thank you all.
With gratitude. We are adjourned until next Tuesday at 1:00 PM.